And for item one, Mayor, we do have Denise Jess from the Wisconsin Council of the Blind. And as a... Receive that.
Thank you, Joe. I did notice that and I appreciate the heads up. Alder Harrington McKenney was at CCEC.
Did just resend the invite.
Thank you.
Hour of six thirty, having come and gone, we will call to order the common council meeting of Tuesday, October sixth, two thousand and twenty. I will ask staff to mute themselves while I unmute the council and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Alder Presto Jacamo.
Here.
Alder Rummel.
Present.
Alder Skidmore. We can see Alder Skidmore. Alder Tierney.
Here.
Alder Verveer.
Here.
Alder Abbas. Alder Abbas is here. President, sorry. Alder Oberos. Alder Oberos is present. Alder Balday.
Yes.
Alder Bedar.
Here.
Alder Carter.
Present.
Sorry, President Carter, I apologize. Alder Evers.
Here.
Alder Foster.
Present.
Alder Furman.
Present.
Alder Harrington McKenney? Not yet. Alder Heck.
Here.
Alder Henneck.
Present.
Alder Campbell.
Here.
Alder Lemmer.
Here.
Alder Marden.
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, I'll turn now to our tech facilitator to read the instructions.
Thank you. Welcome to our virtual meeting. We are going to cover a few basic items before beginning. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. To members and city staff, members, if you are able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. The chair clerk and tech facilitator are responsible for meeting and unmuting committee members. Use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. During any roll call, all panelists will be unmuted briefly. Staff, click raise hand when you are asked to question. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation, please send it to the email listed on today's agenda. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Just a few opening remarks. I would like to just remind ourselves of our usual order of business on items, which is a motion, a second, questions for staff, discussion, and then a vote. In recent meetings, we've done quite a lot of back and forth between questions and discussion, and if we can try and front-load our questions for staff, I'd appreciate that. I also, unless requested otherwise, I believe that you will all be sent a list of the registrants, so I will only read the registrants that wish to speak unless an alder asks on a particular item for the full list to be read. Otherwise, that information is available to you and will be available with the minutes as well. All right, we will move to suspension of the rules. President Carter?
Yes, suspension of the rules, two point zero four, order of business, two point zero five, introduction of business, two point two four ordinances, and two point two five resolutions for items so designated on the agenda.
Vice President Abbas?
Second.
It's moved and seconded to suspend the rules. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of suspension of the rules? Seeing no objection, those rules are suspended. We have a number of honoring resolutions tonight. We will start with item number one, Legisstar six two zero zero five. And President Carter and Vice President Abbas, if I can get a motion in a second, I'll read the resolution.
Move adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and it's my pleasure to read this honoring resolution. Whereas blindness and severe visual impairment affect approximately a hundred thousand Wisconsin residents. And whereas the majority of these persons use travel aids such as a white cane or a service animal to get around public streets and sidewalks and places of public accommodation. And whereas these travel aids are universally recognized as symbols representing vision loss. And whereas Wisconsin's white cane law requires that motorists come to a full stop before approaching closer than ten feet to a pedestrian who is using a white cane or service animal. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and common council do hereby proclaim Thursday, October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, as White Cane Safety Day in the city of Madison. And we do have with us Denise Jess from the Wisconsin Council of the Blind to accept this resolution. Denise, would you like to speak?
Yeah, thank you so much. I am incredibly grateful for this opportunity to speak with you this evening and for the mayor and common council's proclamation of White Cane Safety Day. Since nineteen sixty-four, when Lyndon B. Johnson made this a national day of honor in remembrance of people who are blind and visually impaired throughout the United States, those of us in the blind and visually impaired community use this day to elevate the importance of pedestrian safety in our community and also use it as a day to elevate the important contributions that people with blindness continue to make in their communities. So by this proclamation, I really want to honor the city for recognizing the inherent dignity and worth of all people, all Madisonians who are blind and visually impaired. I am Denise Jess. I'm the CEO and executive director of the Wisconsin Council of the Blind and Visually Impaired. The council serves a statewide mission to promote the dignity and empowerment of people living with blindness and significant vision loss throughout the state through systems advocacy, education, and vision services. As the proclamation names, there are more than a hundred thousand Wisconsinites who live with life-shaping vision loss across the age span and across all races and ethnicities. And our largest growing population of folks experiencing vision loss are folks fifty-five and older through diseases like meckular degeneration and complications of diabetes. That number is rising significantly, and so in the next ten to fifteen years, we estimate that most of us will somehow be impacted by vision loss, if not directly through the experience of folks that we love in our family and friendship circles. Because we don't drive, we are dependent on transportation, public transportation options, and walking to be able to do activities of daily living like going to work, running errands, seeing friends and family, going to the doctor. So issues of pedestrian safety are extremely important to us. So when people stop within that ten-feet range of some of us, when we're crossing with a white cane or a service animal, you are really helping to create a safer community for everyone. When police and public officials help spread the word about the white cane law, make sure that there's good public awareness of it, and other pedestrian laws and regulations that protect people, you're helping to create a safer community for all. When planning projects include sidewalks and curb cuts and clear crosswalks and pedestrian signals that are accessible and audible, as well as clear multi-use pathways, you're helping to create a more safer community for all. We know that when we build for accessibility, that not only people with vision impairment benefit, but everyone does, particularly our children and our elders. It's awesome to live in the city of Madison. I'm still traveling around the state both physically and virtually these days. I see what we have here for pedestrian safety, and it warms my heart to have a really strong working relationship with our alder, Alder Rummel, and to have a strong working relationship with traffic and with engineering, who reach out frequently for advisement. So very grateful for that and very proud to live here. So thank you for the outstanding work on creating an inclusive city for all of us. In closing, I just want to invite you to visit the Wisconsin Council of the Blind and Visually Impaired on our website these days at wcblind.org. And we have a White Cane Safety Day page there that you can check out, and it has a social media kit and also other ideas for really honoring White Cane Safety Day, and lots of other information about our role in supporting people who are blind and visually impaired throughout the state of Wisconsin. So again, thank you for the proclamation and thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much, Denise. I appreciate your joining us tonight. We do have one registrant on this item. Oh, you're getting a virtual round of applause, Denise. We do have one registrant on this item, Allison Bellburne of Mifflin Street.
I don't see anyone by that name in the list.
All right. All right, so then it has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the resolution? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of the resolution, and thank you again, Denise. All right, that will take us to item number two on our agenda. And President Carter?
Move adoption.
Vice President Abbas?
Second.
And President Carter?
Yes, honoring the life and legacy of United States Supreme Court Associate Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. Whereas Ruth Bader Ginsburg served as an Associate Justice of the Supreme Court of the United States from nineteen ninety-three until her death in two thousand and twenty. And whereas she was nominated by President Bill Clinton and was the second woman to serve on the U.S. Supreme Court after Sandra Day O'Connor, and was the first Jewish woman to serve on the court. And whereas during her tenure, Ginsburg wrote notable majority opinions, including United States versus Virginia, nineteen ninety-six, a landmark case in which the Supreme Court of the United States struck down the longstanding male-only admission policy of the Virginia Military Institute, Homestead versus LC. The nineteen ninety-nine case that held that under the American With Disabilities Act, individuals with mental disabilities have the right to live in the community rather than in an institution. And Friends of the Earth, Inc. versus Leyd Law Environmental Services, Inc., two thousand, case that held that the plaintiff resident in this area of South Carolina's North Tiger River had standing to sue an industrial polluter. And whereas Ginsburg spent majority of her legal career as an advocate for gender equality and women's rights, winning many arguments before the Supreme Court, served as a volunteer attorney for the American Civil Liberty Union, was a member of its Board of Directors, and one of its general councils in the nineteen seventies. And whereas, also during her time in court, she became more forceful with her dissents, notably in the Leadbetter versus Goodyear Tire and Rubber Company in two thousand and seven. And her descending opinion in that case was credited with inspiring the Lilly Leadbetter Fair Pay Act, which was signed into law by President Obama in two thousand and nine, making it easier for employees to win paid discrimination claims. And whereas Justice Ginsburg was dubbed the notorious RBG by a law student, a reference to the late Brooklyn-born rapper, The Notorious B.I.G. and the moniker Stock. And whereas Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg died at her home in Washington, D.C. on September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty, at the age of eighty-seven. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the common council of the city of Madison honors the life and legacy of the United States Supreme Court Associate Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg and her numerous legal contributions that greatly and significantly impact the lives of many in our country for the better. Fight for the things you care about, but do it in a way that will lead others to join you. United States Supreme Court Associate Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg.
Thank you, Alder. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the resolution? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of the resolution. And move on to item number three. Alder Martin, emotion?
Uh, move adoption.
President Carter? It's been moved and seconded. Alder Martin?
Thank you. This is a, an order proclaiming the second Monday in October two thousand and twenty as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Madison, Wisconsin. Whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in nineteen seventy-seven by a delegation of Native nations to the United Nations-sponsored International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas. And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day began in commemoration of five hundred years of survival and renewal of indigenous nations in the face of genocide, colonization, political, religious, and cultural repression. And whereas the city of Madison recognizes that the indigenous peoples of this hemisphere that would later become known as the Americas have lived on these lands since time immemorial. And the city recognizes the fact that Madison is built upon the homelands of the indigenous people of this region. And whereas this indigenous culture was disrupted and destroyed in Madison, as in all parts of this hemisphere, and yet indigenous people survive and continue to resist against current injustices and oppression. And whereas the city of Madison will continue to support indigenous nation's struggle for social and environmental justice, religious freedom, and tribal sovereignty equity. And whereas the city of Madison honors our country's indigenous roots and history, and seeks with this celebration to bring greater understanding to the people of Madison regarding indigenous cultures and the enormous contributions they have made and continue to make to our nation and to the city of Madison. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the common council of the city of Madison does hereby affirm and proclaim that Monday, October twelfth, two thousand and twenty, will officially be celebrated as Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Thank you, Alder. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of the resolution? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of the resolution. Thank you, Alder. And we'll move to item number four. Alder Balday, emotion?
I'll move adoption of item number four.
Second. It's moved and seconded, Alder Balday.
All right, so as you can all see, this is outdated, so it came to my attention very late, and we didn't get to, I don't know if Lisa sent an email or added all the city council members. But if you have no objection over being added, then, you know, Lisa would say, add them, add all the council members to the resolution. If you have objection, then let Lisa know. All right, so as you can see, I mean, this is outdated, so I would start. Whereas National African Immigrant Heritage Month was one of enormous pride of African living in the Madison. And whereas the community of African immigrant heritage is a diverse population comprised of more than fifty-four countries and more than five hundred dialects. And whereas Madison recognizes the significance of the African community playing in an important role in our city economy, culture, and society. And whereas raising awareness about Madison's African immigrant heritage is crucial in effectively fighting disparities within the greater black population, and is essential to building a stronger Madison community. And whereas the mayor and common council encourage all Madisonians to recognize and applaud the many contributions made by our African immigrant community in enhancing the quality of life in our city. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the common council recognize September one, two thousand and twenty-two, September thirty, two thousand and twenty, as National African Immigrant Heritage Month in the city of Madison.
Thank you, Alder. And is, and I believe, since it's not proper for one alder to add others as sponsors, let me ask now, is there any objection to adding the entire council and the mayor as a sponsor for item number four? Seeing no objection, I'll ask the clerk to do so. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item number four? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor. Thank you, Alder, for making sure that this got on the agenda.
Thank you.
All right, item number five is a petition. President Carter?
Move adoption.
I believe we're referring for introduction, Alder?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Um, refer for introduction.
Vice President Abbas?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to refer for introduction. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, the item is referred for introduction. And that brings us to item number six, early public comment. We do have one registrant for early public comment. Has Allison Bellburne joined us?
No.
All right, then we will go on to the consent agenda. President Carter?
The consent agenda. I, one, items that have registrants wishing to speak. I'm sorry. The consent agenda will be moved with recommendation actions listed for each item except, one, items which have registrants wishing to speak, two, items which require extra or any roll call vote and are not included on the consent agenda by unanimous consent, and three, items which alder persons have separated out for discussion or debate purposes. Agenda items five through fourteen are public hearing items. Item nine, Legisstar six one six eight six, and item thirteen, Legis, well, item nine, recommend to refer to December first, two thousand and twenty, common council meeting. Item thirteen, Legisstar six one five nine four. The recommend to approve the alternative design submitted by the development team. The following are extra-majority items. Extra-majority items are items will be recorded as unanimous votes unless a roll call or exclusion is requested. Item fifty-nine, Legisstar six two one five two. Item sixty, Legisstar six two one five three. Both are substitutes. Agenda item, part of the consent agenda with additional recommendations as noted. Item seventeen, six two four two eight, refer substitute appointment report. Item eighty-four, six two three two three. Agenda item is part of the consent agenda. Additional recommendations noted continues. Item eighty-five, Legisstar six two three nine three. Items requested for exclusion. Item nineteen, six two four four one. Items, and that will be moving a substitute from the floor. Item sixty-two, six one three eight seven. Item sixty-three, six one two five zero, that's a substitute. Item sixty-four, six one two five two, alternate. Item sixty-five, six one two six five, which is a substitute. Items introduced from the floor for referral. Legisstar six two five floor for referral, Legis 62508, refer to the October 20th common council meeting for adoption. Legis 62528, recommended action, refer to finance council, I mean, finance committee.
And Alder, we also have registrants on items 16 and 61. So those items should be excluded, which would mean that our exclusion list would be items 16, 19, 61, 62, 63, 64, 65. And are there any additional items that Alders would like to have excluded from the consent agenda? Seeing none, Vice President Abbas, let's get a second on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
All right. And then are there, let me tell you that there are, on item number 17, there is one registrant in support not wishing to speak. On item 18, there are five registrants in support not wishing to speak. On item 35, Dale Miller is registered in support, available to answer questions. And on item 60, there are two registrants in support not wishing to speak. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question, just a simple question for item number 18.
Okay, Alder, we'll place that on the exclusion list as well. Thank you. Are there any other items that Alders wish to have excluded from the consent agenda? Are there any disclosures or recusals for any items on our agenda tonight? All right. So just confirming again then, items five through 14 are public hearing items. Items 59 and 60 are extra majority items. Items 17, 84, and 85 are on the consent agenda with additional recommendations as printed on your consent agenda document. Items for exclusion are 16, 18, 19, 61, 62, 63, 64, and 65. And we have two items introduced for the floor, from the floor for referral. Then on the consent agenda, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote on the consent agenda, and each of those items with their recommendations. And we will move on to item number seven, which is the report of the Finance Committee, Legis 61827. We'll open a public hearing on the executive capital budget. And we have a number of registrants, starting with Jessie Bellburn of Fourth Street in opposition wishing to speak, to be followed by Kay Galuska.
There is no Jessie Bellburn in the list, and there is no Kay Galuska.
All right. How about Erica Bach of Tempe Drive in opposition wishing to speak, to be followed by Natalie Scheinman?
Neither of those people are in the list.
Okay. Lindsay Lund of East Dayton Street in opposition wishing to speak, to be followed by Ryan Eyecult?
There is no Lindsay, but there's Ryan here.
Okay, so Ryan of North Franklin Street in opposition wishing to speak, to be followed by Gaya Zhang?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. I'll be brief. Defunding the police needs to be a priority. This is what the Madison community is asking for. We need to defund the police and invest in community and in social services. This absolutely needs to be a priority. We need to listen to Black organizers in our community, as well as Black-led community organizations, and fund them accordingly. And as I know there will be, as I know there are significant cuts in the budget, we need to make sure that those are focused on the police that are doing harm to our community. Yeah, please, please make this a priority. And yeah, I'm in full support of, of, of prison and police abolition. And as our representatives, I urge you all to make this a priority as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Gaya Zhang of Marshall Court in opposition wishing to speak, to be followed by Bianca Gomez.
Gaya, I see you're on the phone. You should have a prompt to unmute yourself. There you go.
Um, yes. Um, so I'm a student here at the university. And as a student living in, who's renting, I'm already struggling to afford housing. And that makes me worried about the long-term residents here who have been struggling for a long time, who have been struggling with unstable housing and development here. So I interact a lot with the Black and Southeast Asian community here in Madison. And a lot of them, and our interactions include them not feeling like their livelihoods are important to improve. So while looking at this capital budget, I don't see a reflection of community members who are some of the most impacted by poverty, unstable housing, food insecurity, and other struggles. So when I was looking at this capital budget, I think there is inequitable allocation of funds. For example, there's only 7% of the budget going towards housing and neighborhoods. And this worries me because the city of Madison has seen a rise of evictions, economic struggles during this pandemic. And I don't think the budget is going to help folks struggling to afford housing thrive during this pandemic. And I also want to say that while looking at the budget, I see a lot of funding going towards police as well. And I do want to prioritize defunding the police, and I hope that you also prioritize defunding them as well.
Thank you. All right. Next, a registrant is Bianca Gomez of Eagle Heights, neither supporting nor opposing, wishing to speak, to be followed by Shisen Fuya Moa.
Hi, my name is Bianca Gomez, and I'm, one of my many roles in the community is as a domestic violence and sexual assault advocate. Madison is one of the many cities across the nation that continues to invest in anti-blackness, invest in white supremacy, and invest into more and more money into police while cutting other important budgets and other important services and resources, actual resources. Police do not prevent harm from happening, including domestic violence and sexual assault. Ending patriarchy, ending white supremacy, and ending capitalism are the things that will help disrupt and end domestic violence and sexual assault and other forms of violence against women, girls, and queer folks. The police uphold and enforce these systems of oppression, especially and including patriarchy. The second most common complaint against police after excessive force is actually sexual violence. And over 40% of police officers around the country have been reported as domestic abusers towards their intimate partner, a wife, a girlfriend, or other, or children, or other folks. Yet we still continue to blindly and unquestionably give them more and more money. I know for a fact that our community has said time and time again that police do not keep us safe, but they contribute to the harm and the violence that we experience on the daily. We've stated that housing keeps us safe. We've stated that transformative justice and community-led programs keep us safe. We said that public transportation keeps us safe. We've said that investing in Black communities, investing in Black-led organizations are the, are the things that will keep us safe, not police. But as a, as a councilor and people who are responsible for the well-being of people in this community, we continue to invest more and more money into police instead of investing in the things that are proven to keep us safe. We're leaning into a status quo around police, and we're leaning into white fears of violence and harm. And we're not leaning into data research that's visionary, that's revolutionary, that's transformative, that can actually shift our community, make it safer, make it whole, make it, make it an example for the rest of the nation to see. We continue to lean into fear. We continue to lean into white supremacy and lead into status quo. But if we leaned into dismantling white supremacy, dismantling homelessness, dismantling oppression, then we would lean into funding, toppling the police budget and funding other programs and other state resources.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Shisen Fuya Moa of Pittsburgh, in opposition wishing to speak, to be followed by Larissa Joanna.
Hello, my name is Shisen Fuya Moa, he and his pronouns. I work with a lot of Madison folks. I grew up in Madison. I do currently reside in Pittsburgh, but I have a lot of ties to Madison. Spend most of my time in Madison, to be perfectly honest. The, I'm afraid for all the folks who, once this eviction moratorium stops, which it will, who don't have, who have been laid off, don't have jobs, will lose their housing. And I see that while the budget, the mayor, intends to make housing affordable for everyone in Madison and eliminate disparities with a focus on racial equity, quoted from the intention of the budget, the 2021 capital budget, only 70, only 7% is put towards housing, towards neighborhoods and housing, housing subsidies, affordable housing, development, food access. Coming from a, parents who are refugees, low income, this is incredibly alarming because my family and many of my, much of my community needs these type of resources, particularly during this time of the pandemic, to survive. So this is alarming that it's, there's not more funding put towards the livelihoods of the people who are most vulnerable, that the system is choosing to passively, but actually actively, harm people who look like me. To, like Bianca said, to support white supremacy, to, to be okay with these disparities, and to continue to follow the same policies that produce these disparities. While there are parts of this budget that fund the police, I hope that gets defunded as well. But I think that once, once the, once all of our folks who will be people of color, who will be evicted, who are unemployed right now, who are facing economic crisis, they will be targeted by the police, criminalized by this system, and will be incarcerated, will be ticketed, will be exploited. And this capital budget won't put anything in place to support them. It is, it will actually watch them and be okay with them as these disparities grow larger, and more and more folks who look like me will be punished for merely trying to survive, for not being helped by the system that says that it wants the best for them. That is stated in their budget that they want to make housing affordable for everyone in Madison, and they want to eliminate disparities with a focus on racial equity. In 2018, in your own report, City of Madison, you stated that, you found that a quarter of households of color own their homes in Madison compared to half of white households own their homes, over half, I should say. Again, just to reiterate this point that the wealth inequality, even in our own little liberal bubble of Madison, is very apparent. And if these policies speak to this wealthy inequality of choosing not to support low-income communities by putting more money into affordable housing, but rather putting money into public transportation, so it could become a more attractive metropole for young professionals, where young professionals are placed as the priority. So currently, as the budget stands, I, I do not support it. I think that it does not support people of color, low to no income people, and that it should be changed and should follow those priorities stated as such. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Larissa Joanna of Blair Street, neither supporting nor opposing, wishing to speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Yeah, I am, so I was, I was a little confused on whether to sign up in support or opposing. I like, I like do want to make clear today is that we need to start prioritizing humans. This, this budget has to make sure that it prioritizes humans right now, workers, essential workers in it specifically. I am not just a single mom or two kids, but I am also a essential worker, and it has been really, really hard this last couple of months. So we really need to prioritize humans. We need to prioritize making sure that we have resources for the community, making sure we're prioritizing housing, food, education, resources for single moms to be able to work. No money should be going to the police department. I believe that we should take funds from the police department. They're getting way too much money. Most, it's, it's a big percent, it's the biggest percentage of the general budget, so that's unacceptable. We cannot be funding hate. We cannot be funding brutality. We cannot be funding this organization who doesn't serve and protect the community. So I am here to encourage you to please consider and do your job to make sure that we have these resources in our communities. We all want to survive this pandemic and make sure we make it through all good and be able to fix all of this together, but we will make it if you continue to prioritize the wrong things over humans. I think that's all I have to say. So thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you. We also have Ashley Anis of Hord Street in opposition, available to answer questions. Are there any questions for any of our registrants?
Mayor, we do have one recent registrant, just popped up, Amelia Royco-Moore, neither in support or opposition, wishing to speak.
Go ahead, Amelia.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
We can, we can hear you.
I am, okay, great. I am calling to urge you, well, let me just start with this. I've spoken to a few members of the Madison Police Department over the past few months, and as the summer progressed, their voices in the phone calls sounded more and more weary. And I, and I, one of the things that I was asking them to do is, is to ensure that officers remain calm and behave in a fair manner. And so for instance, the woman who, the, the behave in a fair manner. Um and so, for instance, the the woman who um the the female officer who uh walked up and got in the face of that woman who was who was filming an exchange between a uh black teenager and another officer, she got in her face and was just super belligerent. Um to to just please ask them to stop doing things like that. It was so overt. And what I've been hearing is how exhausted they are, how like, you know, with the protests, it's just so hard. And my response to that is, well, there's a, there's a solution to this. The solution is listen to the peaceful protester five years ago. The solution is listen to the peaceful protester now. None of you should be in office to climb the political ladder. You should not be holding your position so you can be mayor or uh senator or governor one day. That's not why you were elected. You were elected to do your job right now. And you've got people willing to leave their homes at all hours of the night and go out in the street and risk their safety, urging you to care about their lives. And when you have peaceful protesters demanding necessities that they need for survival, it when you ignore them, then they kick into survival mode. So that's a choice. It's a choice to ignore them. It's a choice to continue funding the police department. Their every whim, their every need. It is their choice, the police department's choice to not lobby with us for to fulfill the funding of public health, to fulfill the funding, full funding for public education, full funding for mental health, full funding for services for uh uh the people who are lacking and not having their needs met. It's a choice to not do that with us. And that choice leads to to bad things, mostly unhealthy people whose needs are not met. That should matter. But for people who don't care enough about that to actually shift funding and change policy, well, another thing that might happen is the damage to property and violence. Because people kick into survival mode. They don't have a choice. If they care about themselves, they don't have a choice. So if we want officers to be less exhausted, then let's actually shift funding to those institutions that have never been allowed to reach their potential, ever. And if those institutions are allowed to fulfill their potential, you will cut half of the people out of the nine-one-one queue. I guarantee it. You will reduce crime in significant ways. Let's do that. Let's be smart. Let's not continue down the same path. Don't throw pennies at these or at these institutions. Let's all together, go together. That includes Sheriff Mahoney. That includes our police leaders. That includes every elected here. Let's together lobby to fully fund these institutions that promote health and wellness for all people. So please make that decision now. Make a radical decision. We didn't elect you so that you could be in office forever or be, you know, go for higher office. And and not doing this, not listening to the peaceful protester, is far more likely to hinder your political opportunities in the future than it is to bolster them. Times have changed. So please, shift funding. If there's a finite amount of funding, you've got to shift it to proactive, root cause, public health and education-centered solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, are there any questions for our registrants? All right, seeing none, we will recess that public hearing. President Carter, a motion?
Move referral to the November tenth Common Council meeting.
Vice President Abbas?
Second.
Moved and seconded to refer. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of referral? Seeing no objection, that item is referred. We'll move on to the report of the Plan Commission um and item number eight. And we'll open a public hearing and Legistar six zero nine one four, uh which is uh creating sections of the MBO, MGO, excuse me, to change the zoning of property located at four thousand to forty-one fifty Packers Avenue and forty-two oh one North Sherman Ave. And we have uh one registrant, Allison Lindsay Maris of Comanche Way, neither supporting nor opposing and not wishing to speak. Are there any questions for our registrant? Seeing none, uh we will recess that public hearing. President Carter?
Move referral.
Vice President Abbas?
Second to the phone.
Moved and seconded to refer. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of referral? Seeing none, that item is referred. That will bring us to uh an appeal, item number nine, uh Legistar. So we'll open a public hearing on Legistar six one six eight six, which is an appeal of Plan Commission action on a demolition permit and final plan approval and conditional use requests for one twenty-six Langdon Street. And we have no registrants on item number nine. And so I will recess that public hearing. President Carter?
Yes, move referral.
Vice President Abbas?
Second to the phone.
Moved and seconded to refer, item number nine. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we're recording unanimous vote in favor of referral of item nine. And come to the report of the Alcohol License Review Committee, item number ten. We'll open a public hearing on Legistar six one nine six nine, which is a new license for Local Motive. Uh we have no registrants on number ten, so we will close that public hearing. President Carter?
Move to grant.
Vice President Abbas?
Second to grant.
Moved and seconded to grant. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that item is granted. Uh takes us to item number eleven. Uh we will open a public hearing on Legistar six one nine seven oh, which is a new license for Coca-Cola Chocolatier. Uh we have two registrants, Siavata Adari of East Washington in support, available to answer questions, and Lindsey Lund of East Dayton in support, not wishing to speak. Are there any questions for either of our registrants? Seeing none, we will close that public hearing. President Carter?
Move to grant.
Vice President Abbas? Moved and seconded to grant. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that item is granted. And we'll come to the report of the Plan Commission and open a public hearing on Legistar six one five eight eight, which is item number twelve, uh which amends the Marsh Road Neighborhood Development Plan and the City of Madison Official Map to modify the recommended street network and greenways uh for a portion of the planning area. And on item number twelve, we have no registrants, so we will close that public hearing. President Carter?
Mayor, I I have a Doug Van Essen.
Excuse me, I should have refreshed. Um so go ahead.
Yes, um my name is Doug Van Essen. I'm the pastor of Crossroads Church, and it's my understanding that the road that is uh being proposed there would um be entirely taken from our property and I have some questions on that. I don't know whether I'm in support of that or not. The question I have is, what's the purpose of the road? Given that in in the area that that road is going to go through, there's really no more development that could happen, that would be advantaged, given um as opposed to South Dutch Mill Road right now. So I'm confused as to why a road is being put in when the businesses that are there are served very well by South Dutch Mill Road. Um second question is, why, if that road is going to go through, why is the uh land to be used for that road not divided between the three businesses that would actually um be adjacent to that road? And then third, um who pays for that road and what is the compensation of the land that is lost for the sake of that road? Um I guess those are my questions. Um and and given, depending on on the answers to those, I would offer either support or um um opposition to it. So I'm wondering if the council could answer those questions?
Thank you, Mr. Van Essen. Um it's not in order for the council to answer questions, but are there any questions for our registrants? Or perhaps questions for staff? Alder Tierney.
Uh thank you, Mayor. Uh Heather Stoudt is with us this evening. Perhaps she could explain um the issue with the roadway and and why um at some point in the future, it was my understanding that Wisconsin DOT was going to require uh changes to be made with the current access from uh South Dutch Mill to Focus Road. So if Heather could walk us through this, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Ms. Stoudt?
Sure, um if I'm able to share screen, it it might be helpful. I can just pull up one visual that's that's in your packets.
Uh can we enable Ms. Stoudt to share her screen, please? Go ahead, Ms. Stoudt.
Thank you. Okay, um here is a visual of the area that the registrant is talking about. So today, we have um an official map reservation that's shown here in green. And the proposed change would basically shift that official map reservation to the area shown in the red hatched um portion here. Um and the the registrant is correct that a lot of this um new officially mapped street would actually be adjacent to the the church property. Um importantly, um when something is on the city's official map, it doesn't mean that it is imminent or that it's being taken um right away. I think the um the important thing is if if it's on the official map, it means that um in any improvements within that area um are cautioned against. Um because the city would basically at some point be able to purchase um purchase the right-of-way from uh relevant property owners um without taking into account any cost for improvements that happen at the um within the timeline that the the street is part of the official map. And so it's, again, improvements within this officially mapped right-of-way are are strongly cautioned against. Um part of the rationale for this new alignment is to actually realize our adopted plans, to be able to implement adopted plans and allow for the future connectivity in this area to be improved. Um as Alder Tierney mentioned, we do anticipate a significant change to this area in the future where Dutch Mill Road um and and Vogus Road are shown here um that would really necessitate uh a new, a new north-south connection in this location and a new east-west connection here um in order to provide access to these likely future industrial properties. Um I would say that if my colleague, Rob Phillips, is here, he may be able to shed a little bit more light on um the the process regarding the the payment, et cetera.
Thank you, Ms. Stoudt. Uh Mr. Phillips is here. Rob, do you want to add something to that?
You bet. Um thank you. Um in terms of the actual location, I just want to add one thing to what Heather said. Uh that existing intersection is in very close proximity to the uh to the major uh intersection of Vogus Road and fifty-one, very, very close to Vogus Road and fifty-one. So even with the uh even with the current situation, it's not a, not an ideal situation. As for uh the, who pays for the roads, uh these are new streets and they are assessed or uh constructed, I should say. They're constructed by the developer or assessed to the adjacent property owners. Uh in this particular case, uh part of the road will abut a a greenway and uh when that's the case, then uh the city is also partially assessed or assessed for the portion that uh abuts the greenway. But that that's basically how, you know, development works in the city. This, the developers pay for the new streets. Uh like we talked about a a couple of weeks ago, the basic premise is that uh everybody pays for a street once. Uh and uh here, that would be the case as well.
Thank you. Uh any other questions for staff? Alder Foster?
Yeah, maybe, Rob, just to clarify especially for the registrants, so this, this is really, there is no plan to construct a street at this time. This is simply placing it on a map that in the future, this is where a a street may be built. But at this time, there's no ac- active proposal to build a street. Is that right?
Uh thank you, Alder. No, there is no active proposal to build a street right now, and uh that would be done in conjunction with development of the site. Uh it could be done, it could be done sooner than that if there was a you know, it happened where the DOT is planning to build an intersection there or something, but that that is not uh in the near future by any means, so um I would expect that development would drive the uh construction of the roads here.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for staff? All right, seeing none, uh I believe I still have to close that um public hearing. Uh so I'll do so and turn to President Carter for a motion.
Um move to adopt.
Vice President Abbas?
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Uh is there any discussion? Or any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we're recording unanimous vote in favor of item number twelve and move on to item number thirteen. Um so open a public hearing on Legistar six one five nine four, which is creating sections of the Madison General Ordinances to change the zoning at two oh nine Cottage Grove Road. We have a number of registrants on this item, starting with uh Emily B. of Bainbridge Street in opposition wishing to speak to be followed by Gila Shoshani.
Emily, you should have a, there you go.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor and Alders. I'm speaking to you tonight as a resident of this proposed development's neighborhood and also originally as a San Franciscan. I want to speak tonight because I see a development project linked with a zoning change as a step in the San Franciscanization of Madison, and my heart sinks. When I first heard this proposal, I liked it. I thought it would make my neighborhood more dense and walkable, what I think is called a complete neighborhood. But then I heard the proposed development had no real commercial space. Let me be clear. While the proposed development technically includes some live-work space, it seems clear from the developer's description and the architecture that this will be heavy on live and the work part will just be a technicality. This is not enhancing our neighborhood. This is creating a dead zone. This is taking commercial space that was active and affordable out of circulation in return for nothing. We're turning a public connection point into a private area, further dividing our fragile neighborhood community. As a San Franciscan, I know something about this. Downtown San Francisco is full of hidden spaces that are technically public but are almost completely inaccessible to that public. These were placed by developers who use loopholes to turn mandated public space into just more private space, making the city more inaccessible and inequitable. These are called POP OS. That's POP OS. Again, that's POP OS, if you want to look them up. And there have been lots of problems with them. This proposed development does the same thing. Just like in San Francisco, it turns our public space into space that is technically public but designs of the public is not actually invited in, and it comprises a neighborhood services and connection. I would support this development wholeheartedly if it preserved the existing commercial space our neighborhood needs. But as it is today, it is a first step towards the San Franciscanization of Madison. I urge you to avoid our mistakes and oppose this proposal. The pandemic will last a few years at most, but this removal of existing commercial space will hurt us for decades. Thank you all.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Gila Shoshani of Bainbridge Street in opposition wishing to speak to be followed by Stuart Stuart Glosser. in opposition wishing to speak, to be followed by Stuart, Stuart Glosser.
Hi, I believe that Heather Stouter has a slideshow and um, that she will be showing that on my behalf. And um, so we're going to start with what stairs mean in architectural language and why it matters for the zoning of this project. And the answer is because this project presents a lot of stairs on the street and not a lot of commercial on the street. So, next slide, please. What do stairs actually mean in architectural language? They mean residential, they mean privacy. Next slide, please. And that is true in old construction uh, and in new construction. That's Johnson Street at the bottom there. Next slide, please. And steps are consciously employed by architects as a signal to stay out. On the corner of Atwood and Division, where the Blue Plate Diner is Kitty Corner, there is a uh, building which is uh, strictly residential. It's kind of an anomaly in a little neighborhood commercial area. And these steps were chosen by the architect to signal this and distinguish these units as residential. Next slide, please. Adding a ramp doesn't change the signal. Adding a ramp indicates that the person who lives in this private residential is differently abled, but it doesn't mean the public is invited in. Next slide, please. We're told that these are going to be different. These work-live units that are at the top of these stairs on this, in this proposal that's before you, are going to be different because they're going to have terraces at the top. But well, here's a terrace and I think you'd know that you were trespassing if you um, went up those stairs. It, the vibe, the language, the symbol of stairs is private residential. Next slide, please. This is um, a signal that cannot be overcome by such things as putting a commercial bench or a industrial garbage can. That, both of those things are in this picture. And what you see clearly is three residential units that chain across the sidewalk. And what you're actually getting is something called a residential gap. And a residential gap is when you have a bunch of residences that um, separate two um, uh, commercial areas. And that's what the look is going to be of the proposal that is in front of you. These are, this, what you see here are three uh, and what's proposed, I believe, are 10. So you're going to have this very significant residential looking gap across the front of what should be a major commercial area. Next slide, please. One more poke at this thing. Willy Street is intermittently commercial and you can tell this isn't part of the commercial, because why? Because stairs. Next slide, please. The live-work units proposed here are employ this identical architectural language that says residential. They are, again, on stairs, they're, they're a half a story up. And yes, there will be ramps. Yes, there will be a corridor system which makes it accessible, but that doesn't overcome the visual residential gap which this proposal has. And our neighborhood can do better. It can support vibrant commercial. Next slide, please. And um, you can see, uh, in fact, the strip mall we're talking about rezoning was completely tenanted and very vibrant until the new landlord moved in and raised the rents. So here's some other uh, um, uh, economic activity which is in other shopping areas. And there's a Rockies, there's a Guatemalan ice cream store, a, a cleaner's. Next slide, please. Um, a popular ethnic grocery. There's a lot of strip malls, they're ugly, but they're full of businesses that are busy. And down in the corner, that's not a great picture, but that's Lake Edge Shopping Center. Those are all new shops. And um, that was remodeled and it's very busy. And it's very busy even with COVID. There's only one empty storefront in there now and go figure, it's the smallest one. Next slide, please. So um, as, this is a strip mall that's across from the Rockies and uh, as the owner says, this too shall pass. And when COVID's uh, in the rearview mirror, I would really hate for our neighborhood to have no retail, which is what this proposal in front of you is. It's to tear down existing retail and um, put in these work-live units. Now, I just want to say something else about live-work units. Next slide, please. Which is that I am actually the landlord of some live-work units and they usually end up as live-live. Because they end up self-extinguishing. If the business doesn't work, the tenant doesn't move out. They just close down the business facade. If they are successful, the business doesn't scale because it's tiny and you can't get like another beauty operator chair in there. So the business moves out, the owner stays, you get curtains on the street. And again, you're um, you're uh, not got live-work, you have live-live. Where you get a retired person who brings their clients with them in retirement, that works really well, but unfortunately, it doesn't last that long. Next slide, please. So um, basically, I'm asking you uh, to vote not to rezone for this particular project. So the specifics of it, as I understand, is that this project is going uh, from some kind of commercial designation to what's called mixed neighborhood. But in fact, when you look at the plans and when you think about what live-work means and when you think about the way these things are constructed, what you're really building are going to ultimately be residential apartments. That's what they're going to end up as and what they present on the street as, even if they are live-work, which they probably won't be, they present this residential gap looking thing on what should be an important commercial corridor. So I urge you not to change the zoning for this project. This project does not meet the criterion for even what it's trying to be, which is called mixed neighborhood. This is residential, looks residential. Last slide, please. I thank you very much for your attention and all the neighbors that had Hear Me Practices. Also, thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Stuart Glosser of Bainbridge Street in opposition wishing to speak, to be followed by John Martins.
Hi, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. All right, I have basically three, three major points to make. I'm in opposition and my first point is I, I attended both Planning Commission meetings where this, where this topic was brought up. And it wasn't a slam dunk, okay? It came before the commission twice. The first time it came, uh, this proposed zoning change was voted down. And then it was brought for reconsideration. In this case, it was approved uh, but by a margin of one, one, one vote. And like I say, it wasn't a slam, slam dunk. In fact, there, there was, there was much anguish a- as a result of this, of this proposal. And I also think it, it's important to, you know, to, to know that uh, the people that testified before the Planning Commission, if you, if you look at the records, you will see that basically everybody from this neighborhood um, are on record for not opposing the development, but opposing the taking away of commercial space. And it would be nice if the neighborhood was listened to on this, on, on this topic. And I, I'll also add in a little side here. I mean, there was a plan, a corridor plan here where it was stated that indeed, yeah, this was supposed to be commercial space. But we just, in, in fact, we heard from someone from, I'm not sure which office it is, saying, yeah, we're sending you a heads up that this is how we're going to change the street or do whatever, whatever, and therefore make plans accordingly. Well, if you backtrack on this plan, you know, uh, you're being inconsistent and as a result, you're going to lose your credibility if you keep doing this. And my final point with you is also is that my understanding is that the city is trying to encourage entrepreneurship. But again, if you're taking away this type of commercial space, this low, you know, which, where the rents are not too high, how do you, how do you intend to encourage entrepreneurship if you can't provide, you know, you're budding entrepreneurs with the proper resources? Anyways, these are the points I wanted to make and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is John Martins of Hague Ave in opposition wishing to speak.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. I've lived in the Lake Edge neighborhood, neighborhood for 39 years. For all of those years, the Cottage Grove Corridor between Manona Drive and Dempsey Avenue has been our local downtown. We could walk to the library, pick up a prescription next door, stop across the street and get some nuts and bolts, go a couple doors down and order a pizza and while waiting for the pizza, browse through a secondhand store. And somewhere along the way, we would probably run into a neighbor and chat for a while or pause and maybe even have a coffee or a beer. Excuse me. In the meantime, our city was conducting the extensive studies to update our comprehensive plan. One of the results was a designation of this area as the Cottage Grove Activity Center. These local centers that had evolved on their own were not only recognized as valuable assets, but understood as essential for the future development of our city as it responds to changing social conditions. Through a thoughtful city neighborhood process, we managed to attract Royster Commons, a unique anchor development at the corner of Dempsey and Cottage Grove Roads that's now highly beneficial to both the developer and to the neighborhood. Manona Drive, the other bookend of this critical corridor, also deserves something special. The current proposal is fine in and of itself. Very similar, successful developments are popping up in different contexts all over Madison. But this is not a location for a proven one-size-fits-all development. The intersection of Cottage Grove and Manona Drive is unique and it demands a unique solution. Just a few years ago, we had two shopping centers and some standalone businesses opposite each other at this designated activity center. Today, we have nothing but a promise and a handful of potential live-work spaces. We have seen improvement from the first development proposal to the current one, but we're not there yet. The amount of genuine public access space in the current proposal needs to be vastly expanded to reach the critical mass needed to make this corridor a true activity center. It is in your power to make this neighborhood into a shining example of 21st century human-scale living within a larger urban setting. Please send this proposal back to the drawing board. It will be back and undoubtedly better. Please give the developer an opportunity to raise the quality of our whole region while also providing this growing vibrant neighborhood with a reason to once again walk over to Cottage Grove Road and engage even more as the community that we really are. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have uh, registrations from Kevin Burrow of University Ave in support, available to answer questions representing Nothian Bruce Architects, from Joseph Krupp of Atwood Ave in support, available to answer questions, Tyler Krupp of Atwood Ave in support, available to answer questions representing Prime Urban Properties, uh, Sophia Koreshi of Atwood Ave in support, available to answer questions representing Prime Urban Properties, and Kevin Yaska of View Road in support, available to answer questions representing JSD Professional Services. Are there questions for any of our registrants? All right, seeing none. We will close the public hearing and President Carter, a motion?
Move to adopt with conditions.
Vice President Abbas?
Second to adopt with conditions.
It's moved and seconded to adopt with conditions. Are there questions? Alder Foster?
Uh, yeah, before questions, I just wanted to recommend that we would, excuse me, consider taking up um, item 62 along with this since these two items are, are linked with the development proposal. We could check with Ms. Stouter, but I, I believe that would be her recommendation as well.
All right. Just want to let folks know, we do have um, two of the same registrants on item 62. Is there any objection to taking up both items 13 and 62 at the same time? All right, seeing no objection, then we will need to offer our two registrants the opportunity to speak again if they wish. So Gila Shoshani of Bainbridge in opposition and Stuart Glosser, also of Bainbridge in opposition, both wishing to speak. Gila, did you wish to speak again?
No, I passed, thank you.
Thank you. Stuart? Did you wish to speak again?
All right, I'll pass.
Thank you very much. Um, all right. So then, uh, questions for registrants? Seeing none, questions for staff? Vice President Abbas? Oh, I apologize, sorry. You were unmuted and I muted you.
Nobody's. Can the staff please uh, let us know about what zoning uh, are right now proposed and what uh, what is proposed and what is existing zoning? If, if they can give an update about this project, what is their opinion? Uh, that will be really appreciated.
Um, all right, Alder, for um, planning staff, I assume?
Yes.
Okay, and Ms. Stouter, I'll let you start and let me know if you want me to call on anyone else.
Okay, thank you. I, I think I'm, I'm the only one here this evening. So um, thanks for the question, Alder Abbas. Um, so the site now is partially zoned neighborhood mixed use on the Manona Drive side of the property, the western portion. And the eastern portion is zoned commercial corridor transitional or the CCT district. Uh, the applicant has proposed to rezone the CCT portion of the site into the NMX or Neighborhood Mixed Use District so that there's one contiguous site under the same zoning. Importantly, our, our comprehensive plan does recommend neighborhood mixed use for this area. And so I think the rezoning, which is the, the portion of the project before you this evening, is quite consistent with the recommendations in our, in our city's comprehensive plan. We as staff recommended approval for the proposal to the Plan Commission and the Plan Commission looked at a few different elements that aren't before you this evening. Um, aside from just the rezoning and the associated certified survey map, which would combine the property into one, that's item 62. The Plan Commission also looked at um, the, a series of conditional uses and the demolition um, of the existing commercial buildings that are on these properties today. And so those were the decisions that were made and finalized by the Plan Commission just last night under reconsideration. Again, this evening, the rezoning is the portion of the, the proposal that's before the council. And staff does believe that a rezoning from commercial corridor transitional to neighborhood mixed use is consistent with our plans and meets the standards for rezonings.
Thank you very much. I just muted myself, the kids just, she, she was talking in the background. So uh, so my next question is a follow-up question to that is what is in the neighborhood plan? I understand there's a comprehensive. What is a neighborhood plan says about this particular development, called ADIA?
I apologize, um, I muted myself too. Uh, so the neighborhood plan, which was adopted in 2017, is the Cottage Grove Road Activity Centers Plan. And it recommends for this area, buildings two to five stories in height that are either mixed-use or multifamily buildings. Um, it does have recommendations in it as well regarding um, the city doing what it can to support existing businesses along the corridor. I think that was very important to area residents during that planning process. But if and when redevelopment occurs, the recommendation for this site is again, a, a two-to-five-story mixed-use or multifamily residential building.
And would this particular project does have uh, commercial factor in the whole proposed project, like first floor or second floor? How much is that in square footage? Like if you can tell us how, how much total square footage is and how much is proposed for commercial, that will be helpful.
Sure. Um, so we have a, a four-story, uh, it's a series, it's a set of two buildings, uh, four stories in height, a total of 110 residential units. While I don't know the total square footage of both buildings, um, off the top of my head, the commercial spaces um, total approximately 8,000. the commercial spaces total approximately 8,000 square feet. And I want to describe that, because it's based on a slightly modified proposal that was presented and approved by the Plan Commission just last evening. There's a 2,500-square-foot commercial space right on the ground floor along Manona Drive, and that would be, you know, the developer who's here and can answer questions also has indicated that they're seeking a restaurant tenant for that space. Immediately adjacent to that space are two smaller commercial spaces along Cottage Grove Road, which would be open to the public. The developer has indicated that initial uses for those spaces would be for co-working and for fitness uses, although it's important to say in the long term, we need not be that specific. They would be, you know, separate commercial spaces along Cottage Grove Road. And then in the eastern building, there would be a 2,500-square-foot commercial/livework space right along the eastern edge of the building. On top of the spaces that I've just described, the developer has proposed live-work units, which have been discussed a little bit earlier this evening. In all of the first-floor residential units fronting onto Cottage Grove Road, all of those units would be designed with spaces inside the unit that could be used for commercial uses. They're also being designed with space for signage and for outdoor seating in front. But these would be very, you know, relatively small commercial spaces, such as, I don't know, a hair salon, maybe a small in-home childcare facility, insurance sales, law, et cetera, would support a wide variety of, you know, office or uses with a small amount of clients coming in and out. And so that is an overall description of the commercial space that's been proposed within this building. And just for some context, two things. In the building that has been approved and constructed right across the street, that's another four-story building with three stories of residential, and then a 3,500-square-foot commercial space, so that's right across the street, across Cottage Grove Road to the north. And importantly, the commercial space that's there today on this subject site, the main commercial building is where the Ace Hardware was located, where the interim Penny Library was located. I believe it is about a 30,000-square-foot commercial space.
Hmm. I do remember the building across, there used to be a beautiful mural before they construct the multifamily on the wall. Okay, so one last question. If we turn down this project through common council, what will happen then with this property?
What will happen with the property?
Yeah, with the plan. Would all the commercial space remain the same, the way it is, or either there's still margin of some negotiation going back on the table with developers, and the community can work together, or this is kind of like something which staff think that is what they recommend comprehensive plan? What I'm trying to say is, if this won't move forward, then we will be back on the same situation, like the same shops, similar stuff, or they can still have, they can still develop housing with commercial on the top of it or something?
Oh, so I guess I'm not quite sure that I know what the future would hold. With regard to this particular applicant, I would certainly have to defer to their team to figure out what would happen if the council were not to approve the requested rezoning. But as far as a crystal ball and what would happen with this property, I think either the existing commercial building would remain and would be re-tenanted over time, or we would see another redevelopment proposal come before the Plan Commission at some point in the future. I mean, I don't know what would happen and when, but with regard to this particular proposal, I would have to defer to the applicant team.
Sure. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Next is Alder Rumel, and then Alder Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Heather. Can you address the comments by the speaker about the stairs and talk about the grade change on the site?
Sure. The site from the sidewalk does have a pretty significant grade change leading up to the building. I think, you know, if you're thinking about a really nice walkable pedestrian atmosphere, you know, you're probably not thinking of walking along a sidewalk that's adjacent to a parking lot, like what we see there today, a lot of surface parking in front of the strip mall that's there today. But part of the consequence of bringing the building up to the street, which again is consistent with our plan recommendations, is that they needed to deal with that grade change within a fairly short distance. And so in front of the building, there are stairs, and there's a kind of a public seating area or terrace in front of many of the live-work units, but there is indeed that separation with the stairs. And so I don't think that there's much that can be done to avoid that, given the need to park underground for the proposed units. That building does emerge out of the ground in order to accommodate that underground parking.
Heather, can you also talk a little bit about that Cottage Grove Road activity plan, and whether there was a market study, and just kind of briefly talk about that?
Sure. So in 2017, along with the Cottage Grove Road Activity Centers Plan, we did end up paying for a market study to accompany it. And one of the main findings of that market study was that, I think while it recognized that there was a strong desire by many residents living nearby to have a wide variety of neighborhood-serving commercial uses, the market for those types of uses was relatively weak back in 2017. And one of the major things that, I guess, that market study pointed to is that this corridor was in very strong need of more housing in order to support the types of neighborhood-serving commercial uses many of the area residents were interested in. I think that the market study said that, you know, some service uses could be maybe supported in the corridor, but didn't see a very strong market for more proper retail within the corridor. Now, since then, of course, time has passed, and market studies are really a snapshot in time. That's one of their weaknesses. I think right now, with what we're seeing with COVID, we certainly don't think that the outlook is any better than what it was when that market study was completed in 2017. Our economic development staff did put together a very quick analysis of available commercial space, commercial vacancies on the east side of Madison. So the scale's very different, but they were looking at the northeast and southeast portions of the city, and really found that the market right now is looking bleak, and actually felt that not all of the effects of COVID have rippled through as of yet, so that I think they're concerned that things might only look, and by they, I mean colleagues in economic development, which Matt may be here tonight and able to jump in and add some more expertise to this. But I think the outlook may be more bleak even in three to six months, as some of the COVID-related impacts are better understood. That doesn't mean there's not a longer-term market for, that there might not be a longer-term market for commercial in this area, but, you know, we are seeing in some of the new buildings, including the Grove right across the street, and Royster Commons right by the Penny Library, that newer commercial spaces are indeed sitting vacant.
And my final question is, from the first version that the Plan Commission rejected, the commercial, the literal commercial was only about 2,500 square feet. There was the additional live-work on the front edge of one building, or was it both buildings? But with the second, with reconsideration, the developer provided a different plan that showed commercial at both ends of each building, a co-working, as you said, a co-working space, the fitness center, and the live-work space. So now there's over 20,000, is that right, about 20,000 square feet of public/commercial potential space at least?
I think that's right for potential. So aside from the live-work, if you take those live-work units out of the mix, I believe that it's closer to about 7,000 or 8,000.
Thank you. That's all, yeah.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Carter?
Thank you. So Heather, currently, is this strip mall vacant?
Yes.
And for the live-work units, have we've done live-work in other areas of the city, and have they been successful?
Well, I would say we have very little experience with that. This came up at the Plan Commission meeting last night as well. There are some units that were constructed as live-work on the back of the Galaxy Project in Alder Hex District along Mifflin Street, and to our knowledge, those are all completely residential at this time. The only other example that we have is not yet, I don't believe they're yet occupied, and those are new live-work units being constructed in the Peloton Project along South Park Street. And I think that, and I mentioned this at Plan Commission, too, that I think that that site has probably more in common with the Cottage Grove Road site, because it's on a major, you know, well-traveled corridor, where commercial may stand more of a chance than it might along sort of the backside of the Galaxy, along Mifflin, which isn't a real commercial corridor. And so we really don't know. I think our, you know, probably our best examples of live-work are traditional, you know, buildings that are maybe 100 years old or more, where that is the way they were originally designed. I think this new idea for live-work, we haven't really put to the test yet here in Madison.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Alder. Are there any other questions for staff? Alder Lemmer?
Thank you, Mayor. I saw that Matt Wachter turned his video on when Heather was talking about that academic development study. I was wondering if he had any more information and perspective to contribute.
Heather covered it very well. I was just going to say, the reports that she's referring to, so we subscribe to, you know, large data sets that try to use a crystal ball to project where the markets are going, and in the case of retail, and retail in this area, in the time horizon that they look at, there is not a recovery, and it projects significant vacancy going forward. So that was all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Are there other questions for staff? Alder Rumel?
Thank you. Since Matt's on the call now, the thing I spend a lot of time thinking about is, how can we rely on retail versus service businesses? I mean, what is the future of each? Aside from COVID, we already saw trends about retail. I know it's maybe speculative, but you are more in the profession than the rest of us.
Big questions. So, yes, we've been seeing, and Heather can chime in if she knows more, trends across the city that a number of our mixed-use buildings, new construction, they have had a harder time filling up, especially if they're not on a very strong commercial corridor. And also, we've seen, I think, that, you know, housing, running housing is a specialty, and running commercial retail property is a specialty, and some of the people who've been most successful are developers who, in filling their retail spaces, come from a retail background, and some of our ones that struggle more come from the housing background and don't necessarily have the deep connections to, you know, large national chains and kind of anchor tenants who would fill those in. But, yeah, I don't have a crystal ball as to the future of retail. I think it was struggling a bit before COVID, and, you know, all of these national surveys show that it's going to struggle for quite a while going forward. So that's probably not a very satisfying answer.
That's the answer, I think.
Thank you, Alder. I don't see any other questions for staff, so I want to just make sure that we clarify the motion. So we have taken up both Items 13 and 62, and so I believe that the motion on 13 is to approve with conditions, and the motion on 62 is approval. President Carter, is that correct?
Correct.
All right. And Vice President Abbas will second on both of those. Yes, thank you. All right, so then is there discussion on the two items? Alder Foster?
Thank you. I guess first I just want to say that I'm just really truly impressed and honored by the thoughtful and intelligent comments coming from District 15 residents. I really appreciate them coming and giving what I think were really thoughtful comments. I also just wanted to briefly touch on this question of kind of the viability of commercial space in this corridor, both in terms of what was referenced in the Cottage Grove Activity Road Center Plan, as well as the sort of broader, more recent study provided by Economic Development. And I'll speak from my experience as a resident in this area for the last 15 years, and would say that this corridor has always functioned very well commercially. At the time of this study, there were some vacancies in the corridor, not at the shopping center, I think importantly, but there are a number of kind of older, additional commercial buildings along the way, and there were certainly some opportunities, not even so much to fill vacancies, but I think that the plan recognized really a need for some facade improvements and just sort of some reinvestment, I guess, generally, in the corridor. But in terms of the sort of weakness for commercial, you know, my read of that was really around additional commercial, and I think that's because there really was, at that time, so much commercial already. And, you know, part of why this specific location was not even really addressed specifically in that plan is because it was, at that time, fully-tenanted shopping center with a full-service hardware store, a secondhand store, you've heard it already from some of the residents, and this is really just three years ago. And if you were to drive by today, it looks like it's almost vacant. And that's really, truly, the result of a change of ownership. And, you know, whether it was intentional or not intentional, I don't know, but I can tell you that this, in the first time in 15 years, that's when we started to see vacancies there. And I think importantly, at the same exact time, the Lake Edge Shopping Center, which is really just right down the road on Manona Drive, adjacent also to the same Lake Edge neighborhood, for 40 or 50 years, both of these shopping centers have, you know, essentially been fully-tenanted, serving the adjacent neighborhoods, as well as Manona and the broader east side. You know, there, the owners decided instead to invest a little bit in remodel and getting some new signage, and, you know, even with the loss of some really cherished businesses like Van Franklin there, immediately, new tenants have moved in. And so, you know, you saw some photos tonight, but, you know, that space, I think, one of the other distinctions I wanted to really make is that, you know, commercial is not the same as retail. And I think all of us understand that retail is definitely changing, the impact of online sales is not something that we're questioning. But there are a lot of service and other commercial businesses that really do remain active and that provide really important services to these areas. So, you know, in that Lake Edge Shopping Center right now, you've got pet grooming, you've got a karate studio, a cafe, a restaurant, a bar, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So it's not as if these are really retail in the sense of selling things that you can get on Amazon. But, you know, I just wanted to, I guess, focus on the question at hand here, which is the zoning map amendment and the new certified survey map. And importantly, as you've heard, in order to move forward with that, or making those approvals, would allow for the demolition of three existing commercial buildings on Cottage Grove Road and Atwood. And in their place, we would get 180 luxury apartments. And so this proposal was originally placed and filed by the Plan Commission primarily because of... because of, um, of that issue. And then last night, following reconsideration and some, uh, updated plans, um, the, the project did get approval by one vote by the commission. Um, and what I wanted to share with you all is what I shared, uh, last night with the Plan Commission, which is that I strongly support the goal of infill development and specifically I support accommodating that development in this corridor. I agree with, with our adopted, uh, comprehensive plan. I agree with the findings of the Cottage Grove Activity Center Plan. This is an area that can accommodate the kind of growth that we're, we're looking for, the kind of growth, um, that we need in, in the city and not on the periphery. And in fact, we've actually seen a fair amount of that redevelopment already occur. So the Royster project that was mentioned earlier, that's added over a hundred and eighty units to date. The Grove Apartments that, uh, Ms. Stoudt mentioned has the, the vacant retail that basically is just completed construction, I don't, probably in the last couple of weeks, uh, if it's even done yet. That's another hundred and twelve units there, uh, importantly affordable units in that case. And the Aswood Project is under construction that'll add another seventy units. That's all within just the last several years here. And, you know, for this project, some of my constituents objected to it, really just because of the intensity of the development. And, you know, some of those typical concerns that I think a lot of you've probably heard for these kinds of projects of worries about, uh, too much traffic congestion or, uh, this description of, well, we just don't like the way that things are changing and it's gonna feel like a big city. It's just, you know, the buildings are too big, et cetera. And while I listened sympathetically to those concerns, uh, I was really upfront with them and, and was clear that I do support the city's growth framework goals, um, and the goals that are stated in our adopted plans. But this proposal is not simply adding a hundred and eighty units of housing. It's a proposal that requires demolishing and eliminating over thirty thousand square feet of affordable and flexible commercial space in the heart of the Cottage Grove corridor. And this is something that has served the lifeline of activity for both the Lake Edge and the Eastmore than neighborhoods for over half a century. And as I stated before, it was really only up until two years ago, with the change in ownership in that shopping center, that we've seen any, any significant vacancies like are there right now. And instead, this has always been the home to a great mix of businesses that have served the adjacent neighborhoods and the broader East Side. And as it remains today, it's truly our best hope and opportunity to maintain that thriving activity center for these neighborhoods. I think it would be a mistake to understand this proposal as one in which a developer is willing to construct much-needed housing in Madison and we're simply looking to burden them by requiring, uh, construction of new commercial space that may not be needed on the ground floor, space that might sit vacant for years. We've got a lot of examples of doing that in this city, including just down the road at Royster Commons, in fact. But we don't need and we're not asking for a developer to create that kind of commercial space. All we need and all we're asking for is the developer to leave the shopping center stand. I ask you tonight to vote no to this proposal and to preserve access to this critical commercial activity center for the benefit of the East Side of Madison and for the entrepreneurs and small business owners that we've talked so much about recently. As you're all aware, the executive capital budget proposes investing an additional six and a half million dollars in the Small Business Equity and Recovery Program over the next three years. That investment is meant to support relief, recovery, and stimulus efforts on Madison's small businesses and entrepreneurs. The goal of that program is to combine facade improvement grants and commercial ownership assistance with new programs, such as a program targeted at interior commercial building renovations, a business-ready program targeted for entrepreneurs of color, and modeled off of the market-ready program. We all know that small businesses have been hit incredibly hard by COVID and many of us are preparing for a further economic downturn that is yet to come. We recognize the central role that economic activity plays in our city, and it's no surprise that it's a cornerstone of the goals and strategies in our comprehensive plan. So I ask you, how do you imagine the six and a half million dollar investment is going to work? What facades are we going to be improving with these grants? Where are we going to support in, interior commercial building renovations? Where are small business entrepreneurs going to set up shop in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three? In a thirty to forty dollar a square foot commercial space under some shiny new mixed-use building? In a small luxury apartment that permits some forms of commercial activity in an innovative live-work arrangement? Or in an existing strip mall that has been remodeled, reimagined, and repurposed for years and it's available for lease at twelve to sixteen dollars a square foot? I've talked with small business entrepreneurs in our community and they've shared that finding an affordable place to set up shop is one, if not their primary obstacle. Neighborhood shopping centers are our best opportunity to support these kinds of new business, business growth in Madison for small businesses. This neighborhood center in particular already has a proven track record and the neighbors needed to continue to support thriving local businesses. As I shared at the Plan Commission, I'm open to a modified proposal that redevelops the two parcels closest to Lake Manona that would allow for a good chunk of new housing units on top of a small commercial space, something very similar to what the developer has proposed in their western building. But I cannot support a project that requires the demolition of the lakeside shopping center and strongly feel that allowing its demolition will be detrimental to the surrounding neighborhoods and the goals and strategies outlined in our comprehensive plan. So colleagues, tonight I ask for your trust and for your support, and I ask you to vote no on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue. Uh, so the motions, uh, are on item thirteen to approve with conditions and on item sixty-two to approve, uh, Alder Evers.
All right. I have a question for Alder Foster.
Alder Evers, you can ask, and Alder Foster can decide if he wishes to answer.
Oh, okay. Uh, um, you mentioned, uh, renting at twelve to sixteen dollars per square foot. Is that the current rental rate for, uh, the shopping center now? Is that what, uh, the property owner there is trying to rent out his space for? Or is, is that, uh, what you think the market can bear right now?
Alder Foster?
Yes, that's my understanding, and, um, Matt Walker could confirm if those numbers are in the range that you understand as well.
Uh, thank you, Alder. And Alder Evers, um, Robert's rules dictate that you, uh, don't address each other directly, which is why I clarified that, but, um, Mr. Walker may have the answer to your questions?
Uh, uh, yes. So the, the current shopping center that we're talking about has an active listing at twelve fifty a square foot. The shopping center around the corner, um, that was remodeled is that, is listed at sixteen dollars a square foot. Um, and then the new space across the street of the Grove is listed at eighteen dollars a square foot, just in public listings that are available right now. So, um, just to recap, the older stuff, isn't that twelve to maybe sixteen dollars a square foot if it's renovated? Newer things are at eighteen dollars, um, and possibly up from there.
Alder Evers?
Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Heck, discussion?
Uh, yes. Uh, I, uh, voted against this at Plan Commission last night. Uh, and I, I planned to do so again tonight because, mostly because I was concerned about the demolition of the, uh, comparatively inexpensive retail space and, uh, commercial space, uh, whatever you want to call it. Um, I do, I would like one clarification, uh, if allowable, to hear what the vote was at Plan Commission last night because, uh, even though I'm gonna vote against it, my impression was that it was five to three, if, if maybe Ms. Stoudt can verify that.
Uh, Alder, the, the vote on item thirteen is on your consent agenda document?
Uh.
Um, uh, so on item thirteen, the vote was, uh, five ayes, three noes, uh, one non-voting, and one excused.
Okay, thank you.
Alder Rumel, discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I was, I missed the first meeting where this was, um, voted down, and I asked for reconsideration after, um, talking to Joe Crop, and he said that he would propose more commercial. So I thought I would give that a chance to show what, what that would look like, since many of the commissioners was, were concerned about the, the lack of, you know, commercial space. But throughout the whole discussion the other day, I think that the question is that for the Alders, I think, is it meets the rezoning? And if you, if you don't want, if you think the retail shopping center that's now vacant has a future life, then I guess don't vote for it. I voted in favor of the development proposal because I have huge doubts about the, the viability of that shopping center. It's, it's not been updated like Lake Edge. Um, I don't believe it has, you know, I don't know all of its, like, infrastructure, but, you know, I, I'm not sure it's, like, marketed towards what new businesses want. And I think, you know, we could spend a lot of that small business equity money refurbishing this out, this outdated mall. And if that's something that people think is worthwhile because, you know, it's, it's a, a space, then, then you, I guess you should vote against it. But I think that it meets, it met this conditional use standards. Um, it met the rezoning standards because NMX zoning calls for a commercial node. I believe that's what's being proposed. It's not just, it's not a traditional shopping mall. No, it's not. Um, and is it risky? Yeah, probably a bit. Uh, one commissioner made the point that, uh, the difference between a live-work space and just renting a commercial space of, say, you're a, um, insurance agent or, you know, a sole prop, is that, you know, you could be at your house and not have a separate lease to pay for. And I, I thought that carried some weight for me. And I, I guess the, the bottom line is I think it, the Activity Center Plan did not even address this side of the block. And yeah, it's because it was successful and they didn't want to do maybe a concept plan for something that didn't look like it was changing. But at some point, there weren't any clear directions for this side of the block, and I think it overall kind of fits the goals of that plan. And so the question is, you know, what is the future of that space? What is the future of a strip mall that's dated? And are we willing to go forward and help make it a viable space? I think that's the bottom line question. Thank you. I, I am gonna vote yes, though, but I think it's a legitimate question and I do appreciate the work the Alder has done and has, has been very eloquent. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Hennick?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, one question I would have, and, and that I think is quite relevant, is what's the status of the structural integrity and the, uh, state of repair of the current, uh, shopping mall structure?
Alder, I'll, I'll remind you that we've been through questions for staff, uh, and back again, uh, twice now, um, and we really are in discussion. Um, and just again ask that we try and keep our questions for staff at the top, uh, so then we can just enter into discussion. Is there objection to going back to questions for staff? Seeing no objection, I don't know who might know this, but let's try Ms. Stoudt.
I'm sorry, I don't know, um, the details of the, the current state of the building. I mean, I, you know, I believe that it's, it's certainly, um, a viable building. It was very recently tenanted, and I understand that the reason that it's largely vacant now is not because of any major failure, uh, to the building, but beyond that, I, I don't know.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on this item or are these two items? Alder Foster?
Thank you. Just, uh, wanted to take the opportunity to reply real quickly to, um, two points that Alder Rumel made. So one, you know, I would say the difference between a live-work unit and a commercial unit is, is not, um, small at all. It's not about being able to go take a nap between clients or something, but in fact, a live-work designation can and, and may likely simply be a residential use. So there is no requirement that these live-work units in any way function commercially. So I, I think it's a critical difference, um, and that is the, the bulk of the, uh, proposed frontage of, of this building. And secondly, in terms of the, um, the, the requirements for this rezoning, I think it is absolutely relevant. So the proposal is to change what is today CCT to a neighborhood mixed-use district. And the stated purpose of our, um, ordinances for a neighborhood mixed-use, it says the neighborhood mixed-use district is established to encourage and sustain the viability of commercial nodes that serve the shopping needs of residents in adjacent neighborhoods, period. This proposal to change to that zoning code is to be able to construct housing. What's there right now encourages and supports the viability of the commercial node and the shopping needs of the adjacent residents. This is a very inappropriate zoning change, and that's why I'm urging you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. And I have no other Alders in the queue. The motions are, uh, to approve item thirteen with conditions and to approve item sixty-two. Is there objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Alder Foster, do you wish to have a roll call?
Yes, please.
All right, we will have a roll call. Um, uh, and is there any objection to, um, taking the vote on the two items together? Seeing none, then, for a roll call on both items thirteen and sixty-two. All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no. As your name is called, I will ask staff to mute themselves, unmute the council, and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I didn't wait to hear the code.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Alder Prestigiacomo?
No.
Alder Prestigiacomo, no. Alder Rumel?
Yes.
Alder Rumel, aye. Alder Skidmore? Come back. Uh, Alder Tierney?
Aye.
Alder Tierney, aye. Alder Revere?
Aye.
Alder Revere, aye. Alder Abbas? Alder Abbas indicates no. Very well.
No, no.
Alder Alboras?
Yes.
Alder Alboras, aye. Alder Balday?
Aye.
Alder Balday, aye. Alder Bedar?
No.
Alder Bedar, no. Alder Carter?
No.
Alder Carter, no. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Alder Evers, aye. Alder Foster?
Um.
Alder Foster, no. Alder Furman?
Aye.
Alder Furman, aye. Alder Harrington McKenney?
Aye.
Alder Harrington McKenney, aye. Alder Heck?
No.
Alder Heck, no. Alder Hennick?
Aye.
Alder Hennick, aye. Alder Campbell?
No.
Alder Campbell, no. Alder Lemmer?
No.
Alder Lemmer, no. Alder Martin?
No.
Alder Martin, no. Alder Skidmore?
Aye.
Alder Skidmore, aye. Ten ayes, nine noes.
Uh, with ten ayes and nine noes, the motions fail. Um, and I will mute you all again. And, all right, so that dispenses with items thirteen and sixty-two, and we'll move on to item number fourteen. And open a public hearing on Legis star six one five nine six, which is creating sections of the MGO to change zoning of fifty-eight oh one Cottage Grove Road. And we have two registrants, Travis Leiser of Old Stone Road in Oregon, um, in support, available to answer questions, represented, representing Tranis Leiser Clary Buildings, um, and Anthony Adams of Cottage Grove Road in support, available to answer questions. Are there questions for either of our registrants? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on item fourteen. And, uh, President Carter, a motion, please.
Yeah, move adoption with conditions.
Vice President Abbas?
Second to adopt with conditions.
Moved and seconded to adopt with conditions. Uh, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of- Seeing none, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item 14. All right. Um, we do have, um, a registrant that I missed on item 15. And we had left item 15 on the consent agenda, so it has passed. Um, but we do also have Anquita Bahadwaj of Langdon Street, neither supporting nor opposing, but wishing to speak. Is there any objection to, um, hearing from this registrant at this time? Seeing no objection, do we have Anquita in the, um, attendee list?
Yes, we do.
All right, would you go ahead?
Yeah, hi, thank you for allowing me to speak. Hi, thank you for allowing me to, uh, to speak. I just wanted to say I'm thankful for the opportunity and for all the work that Alders and Mayor has put into this for months and years and all other people who have worked so hard to create a civilian oversight board. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Um, so that will take us to item number 16. And, um, we have several registrants on item 16, starting with, um, Tyson Vitale of Dell Drive in support wishing to speak.
Hi, Tyson Vitale here, also on the Board of Outreach, who is one of the, uh, organizations to select, uh, some nominees to this, um, civilian oversight board. I just want to thank everyone who could to, uh, um, implement this and putting this in place, so.
Thank you. Uh, we also have Carl Schrodell of Drake Street in support, available to answer questions. Nathan Eckberg of Ameth Court, neither supporting nor opposing, available to answer questions. Um, Shadira Kilfoi Flores of Wilson Street in support, available to answer questions. Are there questions for any of our registrants? All right, seeing none then, uh, on item 16, um, President Carter, a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adoption? Seeing no objection, uh, item 16 is adopted. That will take us to item 18. And, uh, oh, excuse me, to, yes, to item 18. Um, and President Carter, a motion?
A motion to adopt.
Vice President Abbas.
Second.
And Alder Harrington McKinney, you had a question on this item?
I did have a question, thank you. I have a question to the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, I, I wanted to know because we have, um, um, extended this report several times. I want to make sure that the, um, that the chair and the committee will be ready to make its final report by October the 30th. And so just give a, um, a high view of where, where they are and will they actually be able to make their final report October the 30th?
Thank you, Alder. Are there any members, um, of this president's work group that wish to address Alder Harrington McKinney's question? Alder Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, predicting that with Shady might be as difficult as the liability of commercial on Cottage Grove Road. Um, but it is certainly the intent of the work group and we are in the process of reviewing our, uh, draft report. So we had expected to finish that under the existing deadline, but we were not able to meet at our last meeting due to lack of quorum. So we need to extend it in order to have a final meeting to approve the report.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, is there any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, that item passes and that will take us to item number 19. Um, we do have registrants on item 19, starting with Ariselli Esperanza of Concord Ave in support wishing to speak, to be followed by David Blasko.
Yes, hello.
Go ahead.
Yes, hi. My name is Ariselli Esperanza. I'm a native here of Madison, Wisconsin. And I am, I'm just in shock. You know, I think I'm in shock just as much as anybody else. Um, I actually happened to be there that night. I did not catch that exact moment. I had to listen to it later on Twitter. Um, several people obviously recorded it. Um, it's pretty obvious for me who it was considering his tonality, his voice. I have watched hours and hours of Zoom calls. I've been in virtual areas now for over 10 years. Um, that's actually my business is multimedia marketing. And I consider myself an expert pretty much on, on these type of matters. And just the way that, um, Paul Skidmore has behaved himself, I think, in many other times that I've seen him, um, in council and the fact that he had spoken previous, just shortly, couple of seconds prior to, the tonality is the same. Um, I have no doubt in my mind who it was that day with that gender bias slur. It's very violent. Um, I think he ruins it for a lot of us who come to these meetings. We, I've spent three hours waiting and I'm sure you guys will all be spending three more hours after this. And in fact, that's probably what it was. You know, he was so completely pushed. But to let it out on the most marginalized person that would come up is like, is ridiculous. It's ridiculous to me to let it out on us, the citizens of this city. You know, we looked up to you guys and now this is ruined. Y'all ruined this. He ruined this. Um, and, and it's sad to think that there is no, uh, there was no rules to this already. This is city council. This is not a game. Uh, you know, there, there definitely needs to include a forensic analysis of, of this. There should unfortunately needs to have money come into this because this person refuses to acknowledge what they've done. So it's also, it's like you're getting pushed out of the party knowing that you ruined the party. And this could all be, you know, you could save my tax dollars now and just quit. I think that would be the best way of doing this honorably. Um, but apparently you're going to fight with it and that's pretty indicative of a lot of white males in positions of power. You know, we want a speaker identification analysis, um, done by an expert highly recognized in the field, a forensic one. Um, you know, there is no middle ground. We want the city of Madison to hire the best on, on, on finding this. And this is all because this elder refuses to concede and admit his mistake, admit his error, um, admit that he was completely pushed and frustrated and took it out on the most vulnerable person that could possibly be in front of him. Uh, because, because behind a screen, it's very easy.
And those times.
Behind a screen, it's very easy to attack people, but not face to face.
If you could wrap up, please.
Yes. And that's all I'm going to say is that I've seen this happen so many times, this cancel culture. And this is, this is not what we want for city council and I, I hope that we can go somewhere better with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is David Blasko of LaRuth Terrace in opposition wishing to speak, to be followed by Tyson Vitale.
Well, thank you. Um, I guess in a perverse way, I'm, uh, hearings, um, in, in your own impeachment hearings, I'm just wondering who's going to be your Adam Schiff. Doesn't it bother anyone that not one of you heard the dreaded C-word in real time? That none of you said, wait a minute, Madam Mayor, what did we just hear? Doesn't it bother you that not only does Alderman Skidmore deny using the word, but none of you has ever heard Paul use profanity in all the time you've served alongside him? I've known him for 20 years. He'll say gosh and darn and that's about it. Doesn't it bother anyone that the fellow that did hear the C-word is a Democratic Party political operative named Doug Hyent? He notified reporters almost immediately at 2:55 that Wednesday morning. And then he tipped off the progressive Dane contingent as well. At 4:07 AM, Alderman Rebecca Campbell tweets back her appreciation for the heads up. Now Doug Hyent announced barely one day later that he's challenging Skidmore in the next election, complete with the sitting Democratic legislator as his campaign treasurer, all set to go. Doug Hyent is no babe in the woods. He's past executive director of the Assembly Democratic Campaign Committee. Now he's chief of staff to Democrats Assembly Caucus Director. Doesn't it bother anyone that Zoom can be and has been hacked? Doesn't it bother anyone that a forensic analysis has already compared the C-word spoken at the September 2nd meeting with other hard C-words spoken by Alderman Skidmore at previous meetings and using sophisticated software programs he could not find a match? Doesn't it bother you that this inquisition is so nakedly partisan? Alderman Prestigiacomo encouraged Madison to F-bomb S-word up in a scheduled riot that promised no bad protesters, no good cops. Alderman Campbell undered profanity and in both cases, there is no doubt to the identity of the speaker. Doesn't it bother anyone that they both get a pass? Well, because they're progressive Dane, because they vote right. Politics is what this show trial is all about. Shadira Kilfoi Flores, is cops out of school, derail the jail, defund the police, F-bomb 12. In other words, you're kind of people. She tried to derail Chief Koval, now it's Paul Skidmore. Her very own written complaint lifts the curtain on this political hit job. Alderman Skidmore, now this is a quote, "Has a history of speaking and voting in a manner that I believe could be fairly characterized as sexist and racist," unquote. In other words, the Alder votes wrong. He supports the police. Skidmore, her theory goes, quote again, "It just lost a fight to those who have fought tooth and nail to see a city where all people feel safe," unquote. Feel safe? Tell that to State Senator Tim Carpenter. Tell that to Dr. Beth Potter, to Mr. Carr, to Anthony Chung, to Anisa Scott. Tell that to the victims of escalating car thefts, home invasions and high-speed shootouts. I've encouraged Alderman Skidmore to get the most expensive attorney he can find and let Chief Koval send you the bill. One more thing. After Althea Bernstein accused four imaginary white, classic Wisconsin frat boys with a hate crime, Michael Johnson of the Boys and Girls Club declared, "This is an escalation of racial tensions felt all across the country," end quote. Michael Johnson was correct. George Althea Bernstein was a felony hate crime. Thank you.
Our next registrant is Tyson Vitale of Dell Drive in support wishing to speak, to be followed by Amelia Royco Mar.
Oh, shoot. Sorry, I'm still laughing. I can't believe I have to follow that. Okay. Um, so, so I support this. Uh, I, I commend, I guess, uh, Blasko for trying to make that argument sound reasonable. Um, but yeah, I mean, we all know who it was. I mean, it wasn't, who was it? The mayor, obviously not. Who was it? One of Chief Obidar, no. Lindsey Lemmer, no. Come on. We all know whose voice that was. It's pretty obvious. Um, please support this. The argument that Blasko just made, I, I don't even know where to begin. I'm just, it's in my head now. Kind of got caught off guard by that. Um, yeah, I ask that you, uh, support this and support, you know, uh, when folks specifically typically aren't represented in this type of process in city government and actually implementing the laws and, you know, the, the legislation that, uh, we all have to abide by as citizens. And when those folks advocate for their rights, for, you know, their, give their input into the city, um, even more so, we should be respecting that, enabling that and making sure that people feel like they can still contribute. Um, especially so with folks that are advocating for issues like these, where these are incredibly hard things to talk about for a lot of minority and marginalized communities here, uh, especially within a system that has not been set up for them and that has not, uh, been necessarily welcoming to them. So, uh, I think not only in the specific issue, it's just quite obvious, obviously it was Skidmore. Um, but, you know, just looking at a broader kind of approach at how we address these issues and why we should address it this way, um, is why I support, uh, this moving forward and, uh, holding accountable folks that should be and so often are never held accountable that they think they can just get away with something and it's, it's not okay. Uh, we all know what the dynamics would be if identities were switched or changed. We all know, uh, you know, that some folks have an attitude, uh, towards these things, that they can just feel like they can deny it, have to make us get to this process instead of just fessing up to what actually happened. I mean, if you made a mistake, I would say man up and at least say that, just, just say that you did it. We wouldn't have to do this in the first place if that wasn't. And, uh, I would say that Alder Skidmore is putting us into this situation, uh, not the folks putting this forth. So it's a little, uh, insulting to hear rhetoric trying to act as if that's the case. So that's all I have to say. Sorry for rambling. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Amelia Royco Mar of Arena, uh, in support wishing to speak, to be followed by Nathan Royco Mar.
Hi there. Um, if I break up, I'm gonna try to go to the highway and see if I can get better signal, but I'll just try here to start. Um, this is, it's hard to know where to even start. Um, I can't believe the response that came from you, Mayor Rhodes Conway and, uh, Council President Carter. I just, I can't believe how you compared this to, you know, the general environment that has, 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 um, you know, that certain, uh, discussions within council have, have created. Um, passionate discussions, holding each other accountable, people talking about what they need to survive. I mean, that is nothing compared to Shady at 2:45 in the morning, being filled with joy because something she had worked on for nearly a decade actually worked out within city government, which is, it's a rarity for a woman of, you know, uh, Chicana indigenous descent to be able to say that in this city. That something that important worked out. And if you hear her voice in that recording, she's like, she's just so happy. And she had no idea that what sounds an awfully lot like Alder Skidmore, uh, called her a violent, gender-based slur. To have to go back and listen to that and, and, and be reminded, no, you don't get to have joy. No, you get back where you belong, where the C-words belong. You get over there. Whoever said that, and it sure as heck sounds like Alder Skidmore. Uh, whoever said that, that's, that's what they were telling Shady. And so when we find out who you are and when we confirm that it is in fact Alder Skidmore, we demand every inch of accountability that's possible. It is unconscionable that Shady has had to do anything to push for accountability here. Absolutely unconscionable. We all know that if someone had spray painted the worst slur you can think of inside the council chambers, you would be on that so fast with an investigation and accountability. You'd be looking at footage, you'd make sure it was done. But because our leadership in the city of Madison has a personal problem with being held accountable, Shady's actually had to deal with this. She's actually had to do the legwork for accountability. And you know what? If this happened to any one of you, the community response team would be demanding an investigation and accountability, no matter how much we disagree. Uh, please use the, uh,
If you could wrap up, please.
Please use the substitute language. Please, everybody vote for this. Those who don't, you really look suspect. I mean, you really do. So a story has a start and a finish. And if you jump on board, two hours from now, uh, the whole story gets told, not just when you jump on board. Thanks so much.
Our next registrant is Nathan Royco Mar of Arena in support wishing to speak, to be followed by Erica Bach.
Um, he just popped into the queue. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, so I, I too, I agree with, uh, uh, the previous speakers, uh, Tyson and Amelia, um, to, to think about how, um, how Shadira Kilfoi Flores must have felt, um, having that, uh, sexist violence, um, term associated, directed at meeting to be recorded for all posterity for,
associated, directed at a meeting to be recorded for all posterity, for, for people to be able to go back and, and hear, you know, days and months later. And to think that this body may consider letting that pass, might consider letting itself vote on her appointment to the civilian oversight board, not knowing if a member of council showed a clear sexist, violent bias against her mere, mere months ago. I, I can't understand how that is going forward, though I 100% support Shadira being on the COB. I was one of those who nominated her through the community response team. It still baffles me that that might take place with the shadow of this incident still hanging over all of your heads. I support the, the substitute language. This needs to be investigated by credible forensics specialists, not fly-by-night, hang-your-shingle-out dime store forensic specialists, somebody who is actually recognized by people in the academic field as being credible. I think there needs to be IT forensics done to at least scour the Zoom recording to determine whether or not there can be an association of a speaker and an utterance. There's lots of data that gets recorded during these types of things. And I'm, I'm not satisfied that city IT staff have been the ones who've been asked to, to do the review with nothing else to support them. So, I really think this body needs to get to the bottom of this for, for it to remain credible in the eyes of people to whom you claim to have support for marginalized communities, for women, for indigenous peoples, if, if we're gonna allow something like this to, to, to pass with, with the barest effort to reveal, figure out who it is. And, and I would argue that no one should support this more than Skidmore. His professed innocence really suggests that he has the greatest interest in figuring out who this was.
So, your time is up?
You could wrap up, please?
I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Erica Bach of Tempe Drive in support wishing to speak to be followed by Gisela Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm trying to unmute.
You're unmuted.
Thank you. So, thank you to the body. You all, as you're well aware, have accepted the duty and the small compensation that comes with representing the people of Madison. Please, please, please keep in mind that not only are you all paid to do that, but we, the public, are not. And while we're grateful for the opportunity to have our voices heard for the last, I don't even know how many, I've stopped counting how many years, it just feels like the overwhelming majority of you are not hearing us. And so much so that perhaps you didn't hear the utterance of the vulgar slur referring to a woman's genitals, but there is in fact proof that it exists. And so, I just need to call you all back to the very basics of your role. I do this kind of as a public service for the many of you who, who may not be as grounded in it after hours of testimony, but the very first basic portion of an alder's role is to conduct yourself in a professional manner. It's tertiary and, and beyond is to be available to constituents, which would not be possible after 50% of the population who is female has just had their genitals insulted in a public meeting. Not available to us if you're gonna allow something like this to stand. And that you follow all ethics rules and other applicable standards of conduct. So, I really want to encourage you all tonight to support this with the amended language so that you can hold out at least three of the, the four. You're already attending and participating at council meetings. We'd prefer you do so without vulgar representations to female genitalia. So, I don't think that that's a hard press. I think all of you can agree, you accepted the responsibilities to do your job. We're asking you to do your job. To David Blaska's comment about hiring an attorney, we're not gonna have a conversation. You all can call Lester Pines. His number is on your invoice from Chief Kovall's fail. We're not, we're not gonna continue to do this, and I'm gonna ask you all to stand with us. For those of you that do not want to assume who the voice on the recording would be, I'm gonna go ahead and just share with you. For our alders who identify as female, Alders Harrington McKinney, Alders Lemer, Alders Bedar, Alders Rumel. Unfortunately, we're missing Alder Moreland. For Alder Martin, for Alder Carter, for Alder Campbell, I'm going to ask all of you ladies to please stand in solidarity. This is not okay to use this language in your presence or in any of ours. And for any single one of you men whose voice may have been on that recording, Alders Heck, Alders Vervier, Alder Prestigiacomo, Alder Skidmore, Alder Heenick, Alder Abbas, Alder Evers, Alder Foster, Alder Tierney, Alder Balde, Alder Furman, and Alder Aboris, I'm gonna ask you all to step up as men and say that this type of language against 50% of your constituency and the women in this community is not acceptable. Please support this and, thank you. One more moment, please. Please support this with the amended language. Stand up for Shady and all women. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Gisela Wilson of Morrison Street in support wishing to speak to be followed by Natalie Scheinman.
Gisela, you should, there you go.
Yes, you should. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. All of you on the council speak regularly about equity for people of color and especially women of color. And allowing this to go uninvestigated means that you're not standing up for equity. And so, I strongly urge you to support this with the additional substitute language or wording that you're going to ask for a full investigation. The investigation is actually pretty straightforward. It's looking to see whose mic was on and then using that to eliminate anybody else and comparing the acoustic signatures of the voices. That's gonna be pretty easy once you cut the number of possibilities down. And it does have to be expert. If people wanna eliminate the possibility of hacking, I think that's actually pretty slim. But if people wanna eliminate that for sure, then make sure it's an expert. Now, I personally have spent a good chunk of time already trying to counter and explain to someone, I'm assuming is part of Blaska's crew. And if I'd have known that, I wouldn't have even tried, that this is not just a spat. This is not just two different people being on different sides of a political issue that the whole council has fought for and the ad hoc committee fought for and the civilian oversight board will continue to fight for. This is Shady, who had someone she knew die pretty much in front of her face. And so, that, whoever spoke that word cannot compare. And this is not a spat. This is not anybody being vindictive. This is people trying to heal, trying to make our lives better, everybody's lives better. And I'm really sick of hearing that from that crew. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Natalie Scheinman of Third Street in support wishing to speak to be followed by Shadira Kilfoi Flores.
There's no one in the queue by that name.
All right. Shadira Kilfoi Flores of Wilson in support wishing to speak to be followed by Ankita
I had to promote her to panelists. Looks like there was Zoom compatibility issue. Shadira, you should be unmuted.
Okay. Hi there.
Hi, we can hear you.
I wanna start by saying, I'm sad. I'm really sad to have to waste our time like this. But I'd like you to know that it's an honor to have been appointed to the community oversight Let me get this together. I thought I had at least one more person to go. I just wanna say that Alder Skidmore is a paid employee. And being an elected official, he should be held to a higher standard of trust. $10,000 should not be wasted. This is not how our city should be spending money. $10,000 could house a family for a year. It could feed 10 families for a number of months. And I waited. I waited for an apology. I waited for someone to take action. I waited for you, Mayor, who for years have encouraged me to join committees and to use my voice and then to not feel supported, to not receive an apology. I wanna thank all my friends and my family who have reached out. I wanna say to David Blaska, you're disgusting and you're gross and you should stop trolling me. To use Anisa Scott's name somehow against me is despicable. Michael Kovall was in fact found guilty of misconduct. And you know who I'm thinking about representing me? Is his lawyer. I've been considering giving him a call. This is just a travesty that we have to waste our time this way, that, that I can't be apologized to, that instead I have to waste my time and, and our community's energy and our community's resources in such a sad, sad way, when in fact, we should be spending our time and energy trying to make a healthier, safer community. This is not about us and them. This is about safer policing. It's about creating safety not only for civilians, but also for officers. Officers to follow the procedures and the protocols. The reason that Tony Robinson is dead is because Matt Kenny did not follow those procedures and protocols that were put in place to keep him safe, both Matt Kenny and Tony Robinson. And I'm going to, with all of my might, I'm going to try to make positive differences here. I'm not against policing, I'm against violence, violent policing. I'm against abuse of power. What Michael Kovall did was abuse of his power. What Paul Skidmore did is abuse of his power. And it's a shame. This is not okay. Because what we're doing is we're saying that women and, and minorities, that we don't belong at the table.
That's three minutes.
Thank you. I'm, I'm here. I'm not leaving. I'm not going anywhere. So, Blaska, let your people know. To leave me alone, please.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Ankita Bahardwaj of Langdon Street in support wishing to speak.
Hi. Thank you for letting me speak again. My name is Ankita Bahardwaj, and I'm wishing to speak in support because, first of all, I don't wanna give even a little bit time of my day to David Blaska. Like, I'm not gonna define any of what he said with any response. You don't get a response. Moving forward with that, I just wanna say that there are certain standards that we as human beings have agreed upon, that we will behave with each other at, like, with certain dignity. And that involves not calling each other names, period, or any slurs, period. And those are just basic human standards. Now, when we add another layer of complexity to it is that there's a power disbalance between Skidmore and Shadira. Skidmore is an alder. Shadira is not. Skidmore's job, job exists to serve people like Shadira and myself. And I feel that added with this power dynamics, Skidmore using his power to oppress a woman of color, to oppress a fellow community member who has done only good things for this community is abhorrent. Where I come from, from my country, we don't even have a word for that. It is not even in my vocabulary, even in English, which is my third language. It's a shame. And as other people said, I really want it investigated. Because as I always say, I think if, if Skidmore says that he hasn't done it, then he has nothing to hide. You have nothing to hide. You have all, everything to gain. So, use that opportunity to your advantage and if you have not done it, why let your name be pulled to the mud? Thank you.
Thank you. There are a number of other registrants, none of whom wish to speak, and so I'll refer you to that list. Are there questions for any of our registrants on this item? All right. Seeing none. Then Alder Carter, a motion?
A motion to adopt the substitute.
Vice President Abbas?
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt the substitute. Are there any questions for staff? Is there any discussion? Alder Rumel?
Would like to be added as a sponsor, please. Thank you.
We'll add Alder Rumel as a sponsor. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me start by saying that the word was deplorable. And to publicly express my heartfelt sorrow that Shadira had to, to, to go through that. I did not hear it. I was on the call, but I, I heard it through the YouTube as everyone else did, the social media. So, let me put that out first. I need to put that out first because what I'm going to say next is going to be highly judged against me, but I'm gonna put it out there because whatever, whatever and however you define me, I'm going to be able to stand and say what's right for Barbara McKinney. The iterations of the resolution has been changed several times. Had it been presented in its current form, I absolutely would have had no hesitation in signing and being added as a sponsor in its present form. But we didn't get this in its present form. Alder Skidmore, whether you like him or not, had been tarred, feathered, and accused without any due diligence. He said he didn't do it. This resolution said, well, we're gonna find out who did it. That would have been a way to proceed with such a sense of integrity, I would have said, please add my name to that list. What happened to innocent until proven guilty? He was named immediately without due process at all. He said he didn't do it. I wanna know who did it. I'm offended with it. I wanna know who's, who did it. But we did not even allow this man to even defend himself immediately. I knew it was Skidmore. It was Skidmore's voice. He has been maligned. He has been, um, um, talked about in such a deplorable way. He has been- He has been raked through the coals. His integrity has been challenged. And whatever you think of him, he's still a human being. And that's why we have our courts to say, you're guilty or you're not guilty. I don't know. So I I need to step back and say, um, Amelia, you almost got me tonight. You almost got me because it was the first time I had ever been invited to the table. You said that we must work together. We have a responsibility to work together toward a healthy and well community. That invited me to the table. No one has ever invited me to the table because they assumed they know who I am all about. But you don't know who I am all about. And so I'm I'm not going to sign this because you went at it the wrong way. He did, he still has the right to face his accused. He still has a right to be innocent until proven guilty. I'm not supporting who said that. We do need to know that, absolutely. But to tar and feather and accuse someone and humiliate him in such a way, what if he didn't do it? Is someone from the list of people who spoke tonight going to come back to Paul Skidmore and said, we got it wrong? So I have been in a lot of situations where people were innocent and they accepted a deal because they didn't think that they were going to have a fair trial. I would ask you, I mean, why did you plead guilty? Because he said, well, I was told that I would never have a chance anyway, and I'd get a lesser sentence. So for those individuals who decided that Paul Skidmore was already guilty without giving him an opportunity to prove innocence or guilt, shame on you. I'm not in that wagon. Because if I allow that to happen to Skidmore, I'll allow it to happen to someone else. And if I ignore it for someone else, guess what? It's going to eventually come back to me. So a sense of integrity and that's, I can only be who I am, is that I'm not going to sign on to it. Because this would have been the right way to do it. Thank you. I will not be signing on to this.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Balday.
Uh, so Mayo, are we, um, questions for staff or we are on deliberations now?
We're on, we are on discussion.
So there were no questions for staff?
There were no questions for staff. No one has questions for staff.
Well, I have questions for staff, so that's why I was asking.
Right. Is there objection to going back to questions for staff?
No, go ahead.
Seeing no objections, Alder.
So this may be to the city attorney. Uh, when I look at the substitute, I have not seen any cost to how much it will be uh, if we hire a forensic scientist, uh, scientist to look at this. Uh, is it there or it's not there? If it is not there, uh, do you have an idea of how we figure it out?
Sure, thank you. Part of the, uh, maybe because uh, there was kind of a flurry of versions sent out late today. To answer your question, um, briefly, we we did insert a clause uh, stating that the council would authorize the expenditure expenditure of up to ten thousand dollars for the services, um. And I think that was inadvertently left out of one version that we sent, uh, late this afternoon. And that was just based on some real preliminary, uh, phone calls that have been made. Um, and, uh, uh, you know, to some potential providers of these services.
So on the vast one that we are discussing now, is that ten thousand, up to ten thousand there or not?
Yeah, yes, it should be the version that is in Legisar. Uh, right before the clause describing the the, uh, analysis, it says now therefore be resolved that the common council, the City of Madison authorizes the expenditure of up to ten thousand dollars for the procurement of. And then it goes on to list the the two types of analysis.
Okay, so also on the original, I'm not sure that text also is on the substitute. It indicated that the city will cover the cost. Um, so cost for who and how much? Um, so we have the accused. We also have the city, uh, so cost for who? It is a very short sentence out there that is not very clear to me.
Right, so this substitute resolution only authorizes, uh, looking into the data and voice analysis. The preview, the original resolution had a long list of provisions related to a potential public hearing, including a clause related to, uh, covering the costs and the city covering the costs and, uh, not requesting that the complainant, uh, post a bond to potentially pay the cost. So that that was really in the orig- original resolution, which does not apply to the substitute.
So the substitute is only looking to do, uh, a forensic analysis. And then after that, uh, maybe a resolution will follow as to, uh, what happens next.
Correct.
So what happens if we, uh, realize that, oh, we get codes that are way more than ten thousand, uh, dollars? Do we have to come back to council or how does that work?
Right, this is only authority up to ten thousand dollars. So it would, um, it authorizes our office to, um, selecting contract with the service product providers. And that would be a condition of of the contract. Um, I'm I'm not, you know, experiencing this type of analysis, um, at all, or how long it would take. But like I said, that was based on some, uh, real preliminary telephone calls that were made, um, to get a ballpark figure.
So what my question is, if it is more than that ballpark, what is the process again? Do we come back to council and ask for more money? Or how does that work?
Right, yes, that is my understanding. We need to come back to the council for additional funds.
Also, do you know the reasoning why, uh, city IT cannot do this, uh, investigate?
Well, um, I think they can only go so far in in looking at what they have available. They don't have, you know, the 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 data that Zoom, for instance, would have. Um, my understanding is they they also, you know, don't have the the expertise to do, uh, uh, voice recognition, which is, which is, uh, outlined and provided for in the resolution. Um, we, you know, we, we did talk to the IT department, IT department and and basically, you know, all they could do was provide the recording, um, and they could not, you know, make any further conclusions based on the information that was available to them.
All right, thank you. So Mayo, um, can I, I I think I should leave the floor for if there are people who want to ask questions or if not, I can just speak.
Yes, Alder, let's see if if anyone else has questions for staff.
Okay.
Um, and we'll come back to you.
Yep, thank you.
Um, uh, Alder Evers, where are you? Uh, do you have questions for staff? No. Alder Henick, questions for staff? Yes. Alder Henick.
Yes, my question was, it it looks like this is over a month's time period. How long do these, when when doing your initial, uh, phone calling, how long did people think that this was going to take? It seems like a a long period of time.
Um, I don't, uh, uh, you know, I I did not talk to anybody that, uh, you know, gave us a role from deadline, you know, I think they would need, or timeline. Think they need to make, to figure out what they have access to as far as the Zoom data. I don't frankly know what the process is for doing a voice recognition analysis and and what they need. So, um, I think we put it out there on a on a timeline that we thought was realistic. And if it, if the results are 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 available prior to that time, I would expect we can make them available to the council as soon as they are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Alder, or excuse me, President Carter, questions for staff?
Yeah, I have two questions. Um, Alder, I mean Attorney Haas, sorry, uh, Attorney Haas, um. Part of the ordinance for having a hearing, um, and I'm not going to read it, but it mentions it should be expeditiously. Um, can you tell me how this is going to be expeditiously? If it goes another month and and a few, few days?
Well, it's a good question. I think though we're talking about two different processes. First of all, uh, you know, as I said, we, the original resolution would have, uh, directed that there'd be a public hearing held and and this substitute resolution does not. Um, the statute, um, seventeen point one six is what refers to a speedy public hearing. And, um, that would be a speedy public hearing if there is a complaint filed requesting one. And at this point, um, based on, uh, what, uh, Ms. Kilfoe Flores told me, she is withdrawing that request based on, um, the the council considering this substitute resolution. So I think the, you know, kind of the legal answer is that it doesn't apply to this resolution because this resolution is not seeking a public hearing at this time.
Is she withdrawing her complaint to be refiled? Or withdrawing the complaint based on the, um, the conclusion of the investigation?
Right, right. She's she's withdrawing her request for a public hearing, at least pending the results of the investigation, um, and to see what can be found out and then to make a decision based on that. That is my understanding, based on my conversations and and emails with her.
Um, is is, um, oh, thank you, Attorney Haas. Is, um, Schmidke on on the line or is he not here tonight? He is here. Mr. Schmidke.
Yes, Mayor, I'm here.
There he is. Um, Dave, can you tell me where this money is coming from? Um, I I'm concerned that there's no fiscal note and and at one point we, um, I mean, it's not a rule, but at one point we agreed that anything that involves money would have a fiscal note. So can you tell me where this money is coming from, the ten thousand dollars?
Uh, it's not clear from the resolution. I would defer to, uh, Attorney Haas on that. It probably will come from the city attorney's budget. And this just authorizes the amount up to that amount. But we'll determine, um, I think this is just saying this is the amount that will be expended and we'll uh, find the appropriate budget to charge that to.
Um, if I could, the there there is a fiscal note in the resolution and uh, I appreciate Dave offering up our budget, but that was not my understanding. Um, the fiscal note says that the proposed resolution authorizes an investigation uh, utilizing forensic IT analysis funding for this contract will be funded through existing appropriations. Uh, it was my understanding, just based on conversations this afternoon, that 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 would be from the common council budget.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, President Carter. Are there any other questions for staff? Alder Balday, another question for staff? Oh, excuse me, Alder. There you go.
So I have a follow up to that, uh, where the money is coming from. Um, I'm not so crazy on, but I would like to know if the council office has that amount of money.
Uh, Quazy is here. You should be unmuted now.
Yeah, um, yeah, I'm I'm sure, uh, I'll I'll have to confer with Betsy. I don't want to just throw out numbers, but I'm sure we probably will have some cost savings because we've, uh, scaled back on conference and um, I'm pretty sure there's some cost savings that will be coming up. I will have to confer with, uh, Betsy York, our financial analyst.
Uh, David, are you able to speak to the whether the council has the money or not?
I think as Quazy said, we'd have to take a closer look. I assume there's there's funding in the council budget for ten thousand dollars or something like this, so we can probably make that work or other existing appropriations.
So Attorney Haas, in the event there is no enough money, uh, what, how do we move forward, assuming these bases?
Oh, I I, we will certainly verify with the finance department that the funds are there before we would enter into an any contract.
Okay, thank you.
And I I would just, I mean, based on my, you know, brief conversations with with Laura Larson this afternoon, I I, my understanding was that there would be funds available, but I certainly don't have, you know, direct access to that information.
Hmm, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Herring to McKinney, is it a question for staff?
Uh, yes.
Go ahead, Alder.
So, um, my question is, is that this is staff and I would put it out to, um, um, I don't know, I'm just going to put it out there. Whoever will grab it, is is that, um, this is before us tonight to make a determination so that we can firmly move on. I, the term was used expeditiously. But we're at a point where we're not even sure where the money is going to come from. And for this resolution, as important as it is in terms of not only, um, um, uh, Ms. Flores, but also for, um, Alder, um, Skidmore, is is that wouldn't that be an item that would have been buttoned up and sewed down so that we'll know exactly where that money would have been coming from? So that there would not be any hesitation on whichever way this this goes forward? Isn't that the process that would have been coming forward?
Alder, I believe that's a rhetorical question. Is it, is there a specific question that you're looking to for staff to answer there?
Well, yeah, I want to know it's before us to to approve this and they don't know where the money is coming from. So if it's rhetorical, help me to fix it.
Alder, I believe what staff has has told the council is that the money will come uh, from the council budget and that our best understanding is that that money is available.
And if it's not available, it will be coming from whose budget?
If it's not available or if the, um, contract exceeds the amount mentioned, then this item will have to come back to the council for further discussion.
Would the mayor consider any discretionary money to make this not have to be bouncing back between council and, um?
Alder, contrary to popular opinion, I don't have a magic pot of money available to me. But I I feel fairly confident that, I know it's very disappointing. Um, I I feel fairly confident that, um, if uh, the attorney consulted with our budget director, Laura Larson, and she was confident that the money is available and that the money will be available.
Let me put my hand down because I don't even know how to follow up with that.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, Alder Bedar, is it a question for staff?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
Attorney Haas, could you confirm that you have had conversations with Laura Larson this afternoon? And that she has confirmed that she is feeling confident that there will be some, um, savings in the council office's budget to that there will be some savings in the council office's budget to cover $10,000, up to $10,000?
Yes, that is correct.
Mr. Schmidiki, would you also confirm whether you have had conversation with Ms. Larson to indicate the same?
There's sufficient funding in the council budget to cover this cost.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. President Carter, questions for staff?
Yes, Attorney Haas, how long did? You made some calls this afternoon. Did they give you a timeframe on how long it would take them to do this investigation? Being the professionals that you know?
I did not get any, you know, specific timelines because they need to know what data is going to be available to them. And we don't know that yet from Zoom. And so, you know, I think I'm as confident as I can be that this can be done in the timeframe that we have laid out. But they can't tell us that for sure until they know what they're dealing with.
And can you give me the timeframe that you've laid out?
Yes, the resolution states that the results will be provided to the council no later than November 10.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders with hands raised for questions. So I'll just ask again, are there any other questions for staff? Seeing none, then Alder Evers, we're back to you. For discussion.
Yes, for discussion, thank you, Mayor. I want to appeal to my colleagues and in the language of Alder McKinney, Harrington McKinney, invite you all to the table for this discussion. A week or so ago, I received an email from a former Alder who decried the idea of a public hearing, suggested that it was an unnecessary distraction, that when this occurred, it was late at night, and whoever said it was clearly exasperated and mistakes are mistakes, and it's necessary that we move on. And my response was that, yes, this is an unfortunate distraction. But we really cannot afford to just move on and to just gloss this over because if we do, colleagues, we'll have to ask ourselves, where would we draw the line? Where would you suggest that we draw the line? If whoever said this addressed it to the mayor, used the C-word and addressed it directly to the mayor, would that not provoke us to take action? If whoever said this used the N-word and used the N-word directed to the resident, to Shady, would that not provoke us to take action? If whoever said this actually said it to our African-American colleagues and used the N-word in that regard? Where do we draw the line? If we gloss this over, what do we say about ourselves as a body? We cannot afford to gloss this over. Now, Alder Skidmore says he did not do it. But what we're calling for is an investigation. Taking him at his word, I assume he would sign up for, let's have an investigation and find out who in fact said this. Let's air this out, so to speak. There's that old saying that the truth will set you free. But you have to agree with the truth first because without the truth, there's no reconciliation. There's no healing. If we gloss this over, the damage is done and there's no repair. I was interviewed on the television a day or two after this happened, and I said that there were two things that were important to me, and one, that we apologize to Shady. And secondly, that we actually find out what happened, who did it. There's a very remote chance that this was hacked. I think it's very, very unlikely. But it was a man's voice, and there were only so many people who were involved in the call, so that narrows it down. I called for, at that time, some kind of forensic analysis, and that's what's being called for now. So I implore my colleagues not to brush this over the table. That doesn't do us any good. Let's have this investigation, find out what happened, and then we can move forward and decide what to do. We owe this to Shady. We owe this to the community. And yes, we owe this to each other. So I am calling you, all of you, to the table to agree to have this investigation so that we can move forward as a body. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Balday?
Yes, so thank you, Mayor. The few things I want to say, I'm surprised that the council chief of staff was not part of the conversation with regard to the budget. But I just wanted to put that out there. And despite his resign and his leaving, I think courtesy should have been extended to him. But that being said, I think for both the accused and our colleague, it is important that we find out actually who said what because I think that's the only way we can get to the bottom of it. I think Alder Skidmore, who is accused, obviously will welcome that to an extent that probably he can be freed of this accusation. And I think the accuser also will welcome it, even though he's not part of this decision-making process. So I will support, obviously, investigating who really said what. So at least like Alder Evers said, we can close this chapter probably or at least proceed based of the outcome of the forensic investigation. So what the other thing that I want to remind my colleagues again, no matter how happy we are or no matter how angry we are at each other or no matter how we disagree at each order, it is important that we be sane to each other or at least always remind ourselves that we are colleagues one way or the other. We are on this because of our commitment to service to our community. So I personally will support an investigation, particularly if it is within the context of what we are voting on. Anything outside of that, I would suggest that it come back to council. The other thing is, I just want to bring to people's attention, I think they said the report will be out not later than November 10. So November 10, December is when people declare to run again for city council or something, January sometime. I just want us to be seen to be fair again. I don't know how long the hearing will take based of the outcome of the result. That may be just something that we may not know, but I just wanted to bring that to people's attention, that there may be also a need to look at the timeline after the reports come November 10. But I will support moving forward with an investigation. I think that is just the fair thing to do, to make sure that all the parties are clear. I mean, one party or the other may disagree with the results. And at that point, I think it becomes their responsibility, if they want to move forward to challenge the results, to do that. But at least the council would have done their part by investigating. Whether the accused, Alder, did it or not, we will know, at least from our own paid investigator. Beyond that, I think then it becomes the responsibility of either one of the parties to proceed. So thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Is there any?
I have a comment.
Yes, President Carter.
Thank you. So on September 2, social media blew up. If we continue to November 10, it'd be close to 100 days. Close to 70 to 100 days. Here's my thought, and I've talked about this before. We are quick to do a resolution. We're quick to throw some money into it. But we're not quick to think about how can we get this done quickly. I don't know who said it. It was a terrible word. It was a vulgar word. And any woman that's alive knows that this was a vulgar word. But I also believe that this needs to be done quickly. Not only for the victim who had to hear the word tossed towards her, but for the council. And I just don't understand how we are letting 45 days go by before we have an answer. And I want to think about this. I'm going to support this, but in the future, not in this situation because I'm hoping this is the last situation. I hope we don't ever have another situation like that. But we need to really have all the information there and not all the gray lines there. Some of us like details. And it seems to me that in situations that are heated is when we get less and less details. Thank you.
Thank you, President Carter. Vice President Abbas?
I will request for a call for a vote.
Vice President Abbas, we have only one other Alder in the queue. Do you wish to call the question?
Yes, please.
Is there a second to call the question?
You have three in the queue.
It's been changing by the second. Alder Hennig, did you wish to second?
Nope, I was just seconding Alder Carter and Alder Balday's statements.
All right, we're searching for a second to call of the question. Alder Martin, is that you? No. Going once. Alder Balday, are you seconding calling the question?
Yes.
All right, the question has been called. Is there any objection to cutting off debate? Alder, Alder Skidmore, is that an objection?
Yes.
Okay. So there is an objection to the call of the question. And so we will go to a roll call vote. All those in favor of calling the question and cutting off debate, aye. Those opposed, no. As your name is called, I will again ask staff to please mute yourselves on your end while I unmute the council and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Alder Prestigamo? Sorry, that's a no. Alder Prestigamo is no. Alder Rummel?
No.
Alder Rummel is no. Alder Skidmore?
No.
Alder Skidmore is no. Alder Tierney? Alder Tierney is no. Alder Revere?
No.
Alder Revere is no. Alder Abbas?
Aye.
Alder Abbas, aye. Alder Burus?
No.
Alder Burus, no. Alder Balday?
Aye.
Alder Balday, aye. Alder Bedar?
No.
Alder Bedar, no. Alder Carter?
No.
Carter, no. Alder Evers?
No.
Alder Evers, no. Alder Foster?
No.
Alder Foster, no. Alder Furman?
No.
Alder Furman, no. Alder Harrington McKinney?
No.
Harrington McKinney, no. Alder Heck?
No.
Alder Heck, no. Alder Hennig?
No.
Alder Hennig, no. Alder Kemmel?
No.
Alder Kemmel, no. Alder Lemmer?
No.
Alder Lemmer, no. Alder Martin?
No.
Alder Martin, no. 17 nos, two ayes.
With 17 nos and two ayes, that motion fails. I will remute you all. And I will ask Alders, there was a number of hands going up and down during that period. So if you did wish to speak, please raise your hand again so I can get you in the queue. And we'll go to Alder Martin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This discussion has really bothered me in the ways that we have been discussing it in terms of, well, how much money is it going to cost? I feel like one of our first duties as elected officials is to not cuss out constituents when they would like to testify and share things with us. I didn't think that this was a thing that we needed to talk about. With regards to the concerns about this is going to take a long time, it's going to, we have to wait till November 10. The language in the resolution says no later than November 10. So if this investigation into this happens and gets done earlier, we can discuss it when that happens, when the reports, the investigation is done. Regardless of who said this, this, we, this is exactly the kind of comments. And I don't even, it's really even hard to say into words because to me, it feels so basic. This is the kind of thing that erodes trust in our community, that their trust in us goes away. We cannot be calling citizens of this city or anybody that comes to testify before us by vulgar names. I have a 12-year-old daughter, and I feel like she understands this. I mean, this is just such a basic responsibility that in order for this city to trust us as a body, we absolutely must figure out and conduct an investigation into this comment because it is absolutely unacceptable. And, okay. And we absolutely must get to the bottom of this and figure out what happened. Whoever said it? It's not okay. And we absolutely must continue or complete an investigation, do our due diligence as a body with the tools afforded to us. And that's what we are doing right now. And that's what we're voting on. It's not, I hate Alder so-and-so. This is a basic bond to our community that was broken. And that's horrifying and unacceptable to me. And we absolutely must figure out how this happened or at least do what we can to figure out who did it. Because we can't let this, this is not something that you let go. This is basic respect. This is basic etiquette as an elected official. And this is very much how we, if we don't do this, then any trust that the public has in us is gone. So it sounds dramatic, but to me, this is so basic, there's no other way to vote other than to support the investigation. So that's what I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Skidmore?
Thank you. I will be speaking to the process, not about the complaint. I have been advised not to speak about the issue or the complaint, and I haven't. But I do feel compelled to talk about the process. I do object to the process for two reasons. Number one, President Carter was correct that this should be an expeditious process. It certainly hasn't been, and it's nowhere near. It certainly hasn't been, and it's nowhere near being expeditious or speedy, as the law says. And the city attorney was appropriate in pointing out that when the complaint was withdrawn, the rules changed. And it can be drawn out until November or later. I also have an objection about due process or lack of it, I should say. It was a matter of a couple of days before I read my name in the paper and that I saw an open letter signed by fourteen of my colleagues with their titles demanding an investigation. And then the subtitle was, the consensus was, Skidmore did it. And one of my colleagues actually said she was sure that I did it. Talk about due process. That's not a powerful statement, and we've had more than a month to talk about this issue publicly. Well, at least some of you have. Anyway, the city attorney opined that issuing an open letter with titles, which he advised against, was very likely a open meetings violation. I happen to agree with him on that, and I've agreed with that position for years. And now we're going to have an investigation. It appears that there will be an investigation. And I'm wondering where the due process is. Fourteen of my colleagues have already commented publicly that they may have come to a decision already. So let's see how about the due process there is. I will be voting no.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other alders in the queue. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. The motion is the substitute. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Wow, that was a sigh. If I'm reading anything into it, I want a roll call, please.
We will absolutely do a roll call. Thank you, Alder.
On the substitute, Alder Prestajakamo.
Excuse me. We have to, I have to unmute everyone first.
Sorry about that.
So just to be clear, we are voting on the substitute. Those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no. As your name is called, I will unmute you all and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Prestajakamo.
Yes.
Alder Prestajakamo, aye. Alder Rummel.
Aye.
Alder Rummel, aye. Alder Skidmore.
No.
Alder Skidmore, no. Alder Tierney.
Pass.
Alder Tierney, pass. Alder Revere.
Aye.
Alder Revere, aye. Alder Abbas.
Aye.
Alder Abbas, aye. Alder Burus.
Yes.
Alder Burus, aye. Alder Baldé.
Aye.
Alder Baldé, aye. Alder Bedar.
Aye.
Alder Bedar, aye. Alder Carter.
Pass.
Alder Evers.
Aye.
Alder Evers, aye. Alder Foster.
Aye.
Alder Foster, aye. Alder Furman.
Aye.
Alder Furman, aye. Alder Harrington McKinney.
No.
Harrington McKinney, no. Alder Heck.
Aye.
Alder Heck, aye. Alder Hennig.
Aye.
Alder Hennig, aye. Alder Kemble.
Aye.
Alder Kemble, aye. Alder Lemmer.
Aye.
Alder Lemmer, aye. Alder Martin.
Aye.
Alder Martin, aye. Alder Tierney.
Aye.
Alder Tierney, aye. Alder Carter.
Aye.
Alder Carter, aye. Seventeen ayes, two noes.
With seventeen ayes and two noes, that item passes. I will re-mute you all. And it being ten o'clock, is there any appetite for a short recess? Alder Carter?
Yes.
Motion for...
I move to recess for ten minutes.
Is there a second? Vice President Abbas?
Second.
Moved and seconded for a ten-minute recess. Is there any objection? Seeing none, we'll reconvene at ten fifteen.
All right, the hour of ten fifteen having arrived, I will ask Alders to come back to their computers and restart their video. And I will ask staff to mute themselves while I unmute the council and ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Alder Preste Jacamo. Get back to him. Alder Rumel.
Present.
Alder Rumel is present. Alder Skidmore. Back. Alder Tierney. Alder Tierney is present. Alder Revere.
Here.
Alder Revere is present. Alder Abbas.
Present.
Alder Abbas is present. Alder Abros.
Here.
Alder Abros is present. Alder Balday. Get back. Alder Bedar.
Present.
Alder Bedar is present. Alder Carter.
Present.
Alder Carter is present. Alder Evers.
Here.
Alder Evers is present. Alder Foster.
Here.
Alder Foster is present. Alder Furman.
Present.
Alder Furman is present. Alder Harrington McKenney.
Present.
Alder Harrington McKenney is present. Alder Heck.
Here.
Alder Heck is present. Alder Hennick.
Present.
Alder Hennick is present. Alder Campbell.
Here.
Alder Campbell is present. Alder Lemmer.
Here.
Alder Lemmer is present. Alder Martin.
Here.
Alder Martin is present. Alder Preste Jacamo.
Here.
Alder Preste Jacamo is present. Alder Skidmore. Alder Balday.
Yes.
Alder Balday is present. Madam Mary of Quorum.
Thank you. I will re-mute you all. And that will bring us to item sixty-one, which is the report of the Housing Strategy Committee, Legisstar six one five eight seven requesting the Wisconsin State Legislature to pass a bill to create a refundable tax credit for home improvements to registrants near Truax Field necessitated by the placement of F-35 fighter wing aircrafts. We do have registrants on this item. The one registrant wishing to speak is Steve Verberg of Wendy Lane in opposition.
Steve, you should have a prompt on your screen asking to be unmuted.
Steve, are you able to unmute? While we're waiting, I'll remind the council that we do have a number of other registrants on this item not wishing to speak. So you can consult your list. And do we have Steve able to speak?
No, it doesn't. He doesn't seem to be responding.
Uh, all right. Well, we'll go on and if he does respond, we can come back. And President Carter, can we get a motion on item sixty-one?
Move to adopt.
Vice President Abbas.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Is there, are there any questions for staff? Alder, nope, not questions for staff. Uh, all right, I do not see any questions for staff, so discussion. Alder Tierney.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this is a pretty simple, straightforward idea. It doesn't address whether or not the F-35s should come to Madison or not. But what it does say is if they do come to Madison, and especially if some of the efforts at the federal level to get funding for sound mitigation don't come to fruition, then it's only fair and right that the state legislature would take up a resolution to create some type of affordable tax credit for residents that are most impacted by the sound levels that would come from the flights. I'm really hopeful. I know US Representative Pocan got a proposal through the House of Representatives. That proposal now has to be passed by the Senate, who knows what the US Senate will do. But hopefully, you know, that federal legislation passes and our residents are taken care of. But if it doesn't, then I think now is the time to make the ask of the state legislature, get something on their radar screen in terms of things that they should be looking at doing. I don't envision that this is something that in the next fiscal year, given the state budget, that they would be addressing. But if around twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, if the F-35s are indeed going to be coming to Truax and there's no last minute changes, then, you know, the state legislature passed a resolution in favor of having F-35s in Wisconsin at Truax. They made the argument for the financial benefit the state sees or would see. And it's only right that the persons that are most affected, most impacted at that time would then have some of the benefit from the additional tax revenue coming in to help them make improvements to their homes. I know the first home I lived in in the Madison area that I owned, it was under the flight path for the F-16s. I was doing some remodeling work when I discovered that the walls weren't insulated. And fortunately, I was in a financial position where I could insulate the walls. And once I did that, it made a considerable difference in terms of the noise from aircraft. So I speak of experience, voice of experience, when I say that insulation and that type of thing can make a difference. Another thing I think about with this resolution as well is we have folks that are economically hurting. Our recovery is going to be long and hard. But if we do get into a position where if the federal government's not going to do it, if we can get some state dollars in to fund noise mitigation efforts, insulation, new windows, et cetera, that would create a building boom for local small businesses, put people to work. I think it would also create apprenticeship opportunities for folks who have grown up, you know, in poverty and help expose them to working in the building trades and getting careers. And that can be family supporting and really be life-changing. So again, this is just an ask for the state legislature to consider stepping up and helping us out if the F-35s are going to come here. And making sure that folks that do live in areas that are most heavily impacted get some help when the time comes. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Alder, is there any further discussion? Vice President Abbas.
Thank you. Thank you, Alder Tierney. I know your intentions are good. I am not going to support this resolution and I'm going to give some reasons for that. So the district which I represent is the mobile manufacturer homes on Becker Avenue are around three hundred fifty units. They will not be qualified for Part 150 or whatever the name you call from federal government funding. Also, this particular resolution about tax credit, we need to understand the building design and technology and codes. So those manufactured mobile home are developed under a controlled environment in a factory and they use a one type of code which cover their roof and their window together. Like, you know, me and you will leave, as orders who are very privileged, we live in a home where we have various building code, right, insulations, HVAC system upgrade, upgrade your windows and, you know, you go really U-value, R-value, you really adjust your values according to noise mitigation or high standard of energy efficiency. But these manufactured homes cannot be done. The only way to help them is city or state purchase that land, abandon those places, purchase another land and move those manufactured homes somewhere else in the city where the impact is not there. We are facing a major environmental injustice and environmental racism. We are having issues with PFAS because of Truax, because of F-35. We recently, this council approved housing on Oscar Meyer. So two blocks away from my home is sixty-five dB. And I'm honest to God, the plane fly on top of my home many times, not all the times, of course. Sometime they are left, right, sometime on top. And my home is two, one block away from Packers Avenue and two blocks away from, you know, from Oscar Meyer. And that all the housing is proposed there, including preferred affordable housing zone is there. So we are putting affordable housing as a city. I had that discussion in the leadership meeting with our mayor, Mayor Satya, about we need to create, we need to see planning, on a planning standard, what we can do to prevent it. Because recently sixty-one acre image farm is proposed and part of that farm is for development. It will come to plan commission October nineteenth. Is under sixty-five dB. So if first we are looking how we can help existing home, but at the same time, we're developing more houses in the same sixty-one dB or sixty-five dB. And also, to be honest, those, all the decibel numbers are pretty much bogus, best case scenario. And voice can travel in a different direction and, you know, we read the whole report and not to go into more debate on that report, but that is all created on computer simulation. Once the planes are there, after two year of flying those plane, then we will collect data, not actually not even two years, because they are going to fly with F-16. First, F-16 have to get retired. Then F-35 have to run on their own, no F-16, and then they will collect the data. That will take decades, or I don't know, ten years, eight years, and these people is going to suffer. Right now, you know, the community where, which I represent here, everyone, because of COVID-19, is working from home. Helicopters goes, your home shake, planes goes, it's just like, it's just a nightmare. It's just a nightmare for everyone. And I cannot support F-35 period, regardless Part 150 or whatever is available. I appreciate your good intention, but manufactured home will not get that money. We really need to have some sort of city comprehensive strategy, how to deal with the environmental injustice and racism. And then we need to go to state with that strategy and planning and ask state to reconsider either their decision or move their, you know, mission to somewhere else, living in a really dense community. Madison is small and we are flying a, you know, heavy military jet on top of their head. And here's, and you know, here's another thing I will say. It's not about, nobody should question my patriotism on anybody else. I love equally US as other, because sometimes that discussion go around, I support US military. I do support them if they fly away from the community. Right now, they are destroying the same community which pay the federal money and support the US military. We all pay that. So I appreciate the intention. I'm not going to support this because the impact is immense. And that impact, this resolution, including this tax credit, I don't think so this is going to really help lot of homes, including Becker Avenue. And to be honest, mitigation of sound could not be covered outside their house. And we already saw over ten or twelve schools, daycares are in surrounding area. And now all the kids are actually studying from their own school. Talk about, you know, impact. Everybody's studying in the school. So, yeah, I'm not going to support this and that's, that's pretty all, pretty much from me. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Campbell.
Thank you. This is not the kind of help that the residents are asking for from the city or from the state. The kind of help the residents in these affected areas are asking for is cleanup of the PFAS, is for the DNR to hold the National Guard accountable for being in violation of an order for over two years to conduct a site investigation for the PFAS. I mean, if the state is going to do something for the residents of this area, the DNR should really hold them accountable and not allow any construction permits until that site investigation is done. Let's work to, you know, to put pressure on the state in that way to help the residents of this area. From the very beginning of the campaign of the Greater Madison Chamber of Commerce and the Air National Guard to push these jets in our community, they have pushed this narrative of mitigation. Oh, it won't be that bad. It's going to bring in a lot of money to our community and the sound can be mitigated. Well, that's a myth and a lie, because as Alder Abbas just said, you can't mitigate the outdoors. And even if you, there's no soundproofing your home. There's maybe better windows and better roofing and better insulation. But, you know, you might want to open your windows. You might want to have life outdoors. And you might not want to hear, even if the sound has dampened a little bit, have the, that shock of those jets flying over you. Most of the people impacted in the close and impacted areas are renters. They're not homeowners who can benefit from tax credits. And, you know, the idea that, oh, well, this might create jobs is just, it's frankly, you know, making jobs off of people's misery is, is, it's just awful. In fact, Zach Brandon, in one of his talks to some downtown Madison organization at some point this summer, he said that directly that, that he knew that the F-35 proposal was really controversial and it divided the community, but they were all in supporting it because members like Findorf would have access to three billion dollars in federal contracts. Now, that to me is just cold-hearted disregard of the humans and the people who live in those neighborhoods just so the, you know, building trades could get some, could get some jobs. So to me, this is, this is not the message we want to be sending to the neighborhoods who are affected. I think if we want to be advocating with the state, the most, the most critical and really potentially influential thing we could do is to advocate for the DNR to not allow any construction permits until that site investigation is done, which they've been, like I said, in over two years violation of not doing it. So I'm sorry that Mr. Verberg wasn't able to speak, because I'm sure he had some good things to say. And maybe can we check back in with him if he's available?
He's still not responding to the prompt.
Okay.
Anything further, Alder?
No, that's it.
Right, thank you. All right. I do not have any other Alders in the queue wishing to speak. It has been moved and seconded to adopt. Is there objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adoption? There is multiple objections, so we'll have a roll call. And all those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no. As your name is called, I'll unmute you and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Thank you. Alder Preste Jacamo.
No.
Preste Jacamo, no. Alder Rumel.
No.
Alder Rumel, no. Alder Skidmore.
Yes.
Alder Skidmore, aye. Alder Tierney.
Aye.
Alder Tierney, aye. Alder Revere.
No.
So Alder Revere, no?
No.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Alder Revere, no. Alder Abbas.
No.
Alder Abbas, no. Alder Abros.
Yes.
Alder Abros, aye. Alder Balday. Sorry, Alder Balday.
I said aye.
Sorry about that, Alder. Alder Balday, aye. Alder Bedar.
No.
Alder Bedar, no. Alder Carter.
Aye.
Alder Carter, aye. Alder Evers.
No.
Alder Evers, no. Alder Foster.
No.
Alder Foster, no. Alder Furman.
No.
Alder Furman, no. Alder Harrington McKenney.
Could you come back to me, please?
Certainly. Alder Heck.
No.
Alder Heck, no. Alder Hennick.
Aye.
Alder Hennick, aye. Alder Campbell.
No.
Alder Campbell, no. Alder Lemmer.
Aye.
Alder Lemmer, aye. Alder Martin.
No.
Alder Martin, no. Alder Harrington McKenney.
Aye.
Alder Harrington McKenney, aye. That is eight ayes, eleven noes.
All right, with eleven noes, the motion fails. Now we'll re-mute you all. And that will take us to item number sixty-three, which is Legisstar six one two five zero, creating sections of the MGO to prohibit the Madison Police Department from using tear gas, mace, and impact projectile devices. And this is a substitute, and we do have registrants on item sixty-three. Starting with Michael Malloy of Carroll Street in opposition wishing to speak, to be followed by Aaron Camnitz.
Hello, are you guys able to hear me okay?
Yes.
My name is Mike Malloy. I'm an officer with the City of Madison Police Department. I actually live out in District Eleven, and I have lived there for twenty-four of the past thirty-three years. Agenda item sixty-three would remove impact weapons, pepper spray, and tear gas from the MPD as options for de-escalation. It would greatly limit ways to effectively and safely resolve incidents where subjects are armed, combative, or actively resisting. According to MPD incident report, in July of this year, a Madison man strangled a woman before holding a knife to her, alternating between pointing it at her stomach and her neck. The man did not cease his behavior when engaged verbally by MPD. MPD used a forty millimeter sponge round to strike the subject, knocking him to the ground. Officers then were able to move in and deploy tasers, taking the subject into custody. This outcome would not have been possible without access to impact weapons. Additionally, the ad hoc committee, which reviewed the MPD, has recommended expanding access to less lethal tools, and this is doing the exact opposite. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Aaron Camnitz of Mifflin Street in opposition wishing to speak, to be followed by Nicholas Davies.
There is no Aaron in the queue.
All right. Do we have Nicholas Davies of Richard Street in support wishing to speak?
Yes.
To be followed by Aditha Pugazendi.
Nicholas, you are unmuted.
Thanks, and thanks to everybody for letting me speak. I'm going to go through the uses of force that this motion is looking at prohibiting the use of. And I'll see how far I get in three minutes. So first of all, tear gas is a use of force that Madison PD, at least in their current and usage that I'm aware of, is used in terms of moving crowds. So when they, when they write up their use of force reports, their justification is typically in terms of, I wanted to take this crowd and part them into two, or I wanted to try to send them this way down Wisconsin Avenue. So they're not using it at individuals in any intentional way. And the reality is that the people on the other end, who are, you know, impacted by this tear gas, are human beings. They're protesters, journalists, street musicians, community leaders, bystanders, potentially people in their own homes who just happen to live on Wisconsin Avenue or just happen to live on a square on State Street. And these officers who are using this have no way of knowing who they're actually affecting. They have no way of accounting for who they actually hurt in their use of force. And, you know, this kind of reveals what these are actually for, because, you know, we clearly saw that tear gas is not for de-escalating a situation. It does the exact opposite. It's not for resolving a situation quickly. We saw how those situations downtown dragged out. The real purpose here is to inflict violence without accountability. Because, you know, when an officer is firing tear gas at a crowd, there's no telling, you know, which Grenadier's tear gas canister might cause someone with asthma to choke to death as they have elsewhere in the country. to, to choke to death as they have elsewhere in the country. Um, excuse me. There's no, there's no telling, you know, which officer should get dinged on their record for inappropriate use of it. There's no way for, for families to, you know, file civil suit. There's, there's just no accountability and that's, that's what it's for. And so I, I really think we need to question why we're giving our police access to this. Um, you know, tear gas doesn't distinguish between guilty and innocent people. Um, you know, I know there's another motion about this, uh, 61265. Um, you know, I think if, if something passes tonight, that'd be great. Um, I do question why that other motion doesn't take effect immediately. What, what do we want Madison PD to be allowed to do to us in the next several months that, that it needs to not take effect immediately? Um, so.
Next time.
Thanks.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Aditha Pugazendi of High Street in support wishing to speak to be followed, uh, by Aaron Chapin.
Hi, everyone. Hi, counsel. This is, uh, Aditya. Um, I'm in support of this measure for similar reasons to Nicholas, you know. Uh, I don't think, as the last few months have shown us, that, um, Madison PD entrusted to, uh, use these, uh, weapons, that's what they are, with, uh, public safety in its, uh, as it's, as a consideration, you know, as Nicholas pointed out, the tear gas, uh, harms indiscriminately, you know, and it's not, not just whoever the police have deemed wrongdoers, but whoever else happens to be in the area, which has included, you know, homeless people on State Street, uh, their bystanders on State Street, people in their own homes. Um, and tear gas, we know, like, has a lingering effect too in those areas. Um, you know, and I think it's doubly, you know, doubly bad that this was done in the middle of a respiratory pandemic when we know what tear gas does, like, uh, it would only be more likely to spread, uh, cause the spread of COVID, you know. Uh, it shouldn't be used on protesters, let alone bystanders around them, and I fully support this, an immediate ban on these weapons. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and I misspoke, um, Aaron Chapman is here in opposition, available to answer questions.
Um, we do have, um, Aaron Commence is in the queue now.
Ah, okay. So Aaron Kamnitz of Mifflin Street in opposition wishing to speak.
Uh, yes, so I would much prefer that our police department, um, use non-lethal means of interacting with riots, as we've seen with destruction of property, than coming out in a more forceful way, such as firing firearms or using clubs or something else. I think this is an easy way to disperse. We've done it, um, on State Street for, well, as long as I've been in Madison, going back into the early 2000s after Freak Fest and other events such as that, along with Mifflin Street. Um, i- it's a much safer way of dispersing a crowd than the police having to be very forceful and interacting in a way that would more enrage, I feel, the community than using something as these. Um, they're common throughout the country and they're a great dispersal tool. Um, and I think that should be recognized and not taken away from the police, requiring the police to become more in contact and ultimately more aggressive. That's what you got from me. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, um, there are also a number of other registrants not wishing to speak. I'll refer you to the list. Are there questions for any of our registrants on this item? All right, um, seeing none. Then, uh, President Carter, a motion?
Move to adopt the substitute.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt the substitute. Is there discussion? Uh, seeing, I'm sorry, I should have asked, are there questions for staff? No questions for staff. Is there discussion? Alder Prestajakamo.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I'll, I'll be brief. I guess I just wanted to say that, you know, I'm, I'm really glad I introduced this ordinance and, um, you know, seeing the discussion around it, um, you know, a lot of the points made has certainly enlightened my perspective and I hope it has, you know, for many and, um, and so I, I've gotten the question too, like, why, why did I introduce this? And so my answer will always be, um, you know, we should not allow police to use weapons, even if they're less lethal, when they have flagrantly violated their own rules with these weapons. Um, you know, I, I think it's perverse to even suggest that allowing these tools will keep our community safer, when, like I said, we've already know they've been blatantly used to violate SOPs, um, and cause more harm to the community. Um, and so I would, I'd wrap up by saying, like, for me, I, I don't think it's good policymaking to allow people, um, continued usage despite misusing that privilege multiple times. I don't think that builds trust with our community, um, and especially at a time when we woefully lack it. Um, so for me, it's simple. I, I can't vote to allow these use of tools.
Thank you, Alder. I have no further Alders in the queue. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the substitute. Is there objection?
Can we have a roll call?
A roll call has been requested, um, so all those in favor, aye. Um, those opposed, no. As your name is called, we'll unmute you all and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Thank you. Alder Prestajakamo.
Aye.
Alder Prestajakamo, aye. Alder Rummel.
Aye.
Alder Rummel, aye. Alder Skidmore.
No.
Alder Skidmore, no. Alder Tierney.
No.
Alder Tierney, no. Alder Reverir.
No.
Alder Reverir, no. Alder Abbas.
No.
Alder Abbas, no. Alder Alboras.
No.
Alder Alboras, no. Alder Balde.
No.
Oh, thank you. Alder Alba- Balde, no. Alder Bedar.
No.
Alder Bedar, no. Alder Carter.
No.
Alder Carter, no. Alder Evers.
No.
Alder Evers, no. Alder Foster.
No.
Alder Foster, no. Alder Furman.
No.
Alder Furman, no. Alder Harrington McKenney.
No.
Alder Harrington McKenney, no. Alder Heck.
No.
Alder Heck, no. Alder Henick.
No.
Alder Henick, no. Alder Campbell.
Aye.
Alder Campbell, aye. Alder Lemmer.
No.
Alder Lemmer, no. Alder Martin.
No.
Alder Martin, no. We have three ayes, 16 nos.
Thank you. With 16 nos, that item fails. I will remute you all. And, um, that will take us to item number 64, um, which is Legis 61252, the alternate creating sections of the MGO to establish procedures for the Madison Police Department to obtain property from the Defense Logistics Agency under the 1033 program. We do have registrants on this item, starting with Michael Malloy of Carroll Street, neither supporting nor opposing, wishing to speak, to be followed by Nicholas Davies.
I'll make this, uh, quick. Um, I would just like to point out that I have concerns about us limiting the actual purchase of items by the police department for items that they're approved to use. I have no issue with, uh, notification or approval from the council on the $50,000 limit. Uh, however, uh, taking an item such as tear gas, if it is still allowed, uh, and telling us that it can't be purchased from the most fiscally responsible, uh, location seems to be counterintuitive when we're dealing with the budget issues we are. I got nothing further. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next addition is Nicholas Davies of Richard Street in support, wishing to speak, to be followed by Reece Bailey.
Hi, um, thanks for letting me speak again. Um, so first off, in terms of why we're doing this, the problem that we're trying to solve is that Madison PD does often look and act like an occupying army. And, you know, this is because Madison officers predominantly do not live in the city that they police. And, you know, they, they access and equip themselves with military-grade, uh, equipment and weaponry that they get through this 1033 program. And this is a problem because there needs to be mutual trust between the community and the police department. And armoring the police this way makes it clear that they don't trust civilians and they're prepared to turn on us at any moment. Um, so I want to address some criticisms of the original motion, that, you know, the 1033 program is allegedly a cost-saving program. I find that funny because Madison PD, um, bought a $700,000, I'm rounding the numbers here, but a $700,000 mine-resistant vehicle. This is not a cost-saving measure. This is like, this is like a midlife crisis vehicle, except it's like an armored minivan that's intended to intimidate. Um, and these are also not essential purchases, or they would be in the police budget. Um, these are completely discretionary purchases. Um, you know, I'm not against 100% of them. You know, Madison PD has also bought things like trousers or like safety goggles, like, okay, those don't hurt anybody. Um, but in terms of this just being a, a cheap, efficient way for Chief Wall to get equipment, he can shop local, he can shop Amazon, he can go on Overstock sites, just like the rest of us, and, and source what needs to be sourced without getting it through these, uh, kind of defense-backed channels and, and equipping Madison PD with, with military tech. Um, but, you know, I think this really needs to be restored to its original version. Um, the substitute, you know, the big item spending cap was negotiated with Chief Wall. The categories of things that they're not allowed to get through the 1033 program was okayed with Chief Wall. He has gutted this measure and, and completely taken out its efficacy. And it's, it's been rewritten in a way that's not at all future-proof. It puts the onus on you all, city council, to react when new items get made available through this 1033 program. So if something atrocious comes on this market, it puts the burden on you to rush through and add something to this exclusion list. That's before that Chief Wall can go online and, and order it. That's not sustainable and this, it would be easier to just end our participation in the 1033 program altogether. Um, but a more future-proof version would be to list things that, that we are okay with them buying, like parkas and trousers and things that don't hurt people, don't intimidate people. Um, so thank you for your time and please restore this measure to the, to its original uncorrupted version for passage. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Reece Bailey of West Gorham in support wishing to speak, to be followed by Nada Almakashvi.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Reece Bailey and I speak here before you as a member of the District 4 community. I strongly encourage the council to adopt agenda item 64, as I believe it is a common sense first step in addressing the issue of police militarization. According to research conducted by the Milwaukee Journey Sentinel, Wisconsin police departments have acquired more than $45 million in surplus military equipment since the 1033 program began in 1990. According to a 2014 report by the Congressional Research Service, the program was initiated at a time when the Defense Department was taking a more prominent and active role in detecting illegal drug trafficking in the United States. It is my personal belief that the federal war on drugs is not an initiative which should be assisted by local law enforcement. I do not want the city that I call home to take any part in what I personally see as an ill-disguised systemic attack on disenfranchised communities in America. But I digress. Wisconsin law enforcement agencies have received a lot of money from this program, including millions for armored vehicles sent to certain police departments across the state. One such police department was the Madison Police Department, which, uh, had in its possession an MRAP, or mine-resistant armored vehicle, up until 2018. A previous speaker spoke on this. Uh, the Madison Police Department decommissioned this vehicle because it was too expensive to maintain, an act which demonstrates the irresponsible purchasing power given to law enforcement agencies under the 1033 program. The US military has acknowledged that MRAPs are expensive to maintain, they tear up asphalt, and they have a high rollover potential. Yet the Madison Police Department was able to acquire an MRAP with no oversight and at the cost of the citizens of Madison. The citizens of Madison were expected to foot the bill for any possible damages incurred by this vehicle. They were likewise, they were likewise expected to live with the possibility that the vehicle could injure someone during a training exercise or during its active use with its high rollover potential. Furthermore, it is my belief that military-grade equipment serves only to divide police and the communities they're supposed to protect. The, the final report of President Obama's Executive Task Force on 21st Century Policing stipulated the need for changing the mentality of policing from a warrior mentality to that of a guardian mentality. Police officers are guardians. They shouldn't be soldiers. In order to underline this distinction, I believe that it is important that our police officers no longer accept equipment gifted to them from the Department of Defense. I support this proposal because it is the bare minimum of what can be done to address this issue, but I believe that further action is still necessary. I personally see no reason why the Madison Police Department needs to accept any equipment from the 1033 program. It is my opinion that when a city can no longer support its agencies independently, those agencies have expanded beyond their designated purpose in the community. I understand that this program provides equipment that the city would otherwise have to provide, but I believe that allowing the Department of Defense to do the job of local government will only widen the gap between police officers and the civilians that they're supposed to protect. That being said, I understand that this proposal is a compromise and I support its passage, but I again encourage further action by this committee. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next addition is Nada Almakashvi of Shboygan Ave in opposition wishing to speak, to be followed by Aditya Pugazendi.
Thank you. Growing up black, I learned about the police not as a phenomenon of safety, but as a mechanism of fear. When I see a police officer, I feel gun-shocked as ghosts in my own spine, because that is what it is. The MPD are ghosts of a slave patrol and white supremacy that has not ended, but rather just morphed to look like the incrementalism and respectability politics that are embedded within this ordinance. This ordinance is a product of a bad faith attempt to continue the politics of the 1900s. Attack dogs, the lynch mob, the scores of white moderates, explaining that if the Negro might just behave, the Negro might get a slight taste of freedom. This ordinance hides loopholes for the MPD to acquire the weapons it seeks to half-heartedly ban under a white sheet. It looks at the black community and says, we cannot trust you to behave, we cannot trust you to know what is good for you, we do not believe you when you say they are hurting you. The sponsors and passers of an ordinance like this one clearly and loudly state as signees, we have rejected the reality that our eyes have shown us with George Floyd and Jacob Black, and trade humanity for order and safety that only protects the white man. This is what the black community hears when they read this. They hear, your life doesn't matter. Your life is not valuable enough for us to find the power to stand up for it completely. To the Keith Furmans of the world, you might not have to put on a white sheet yourself, but you allow one to be draped in front of you as you insist on seeing through a lens of white privilege and white comfortability and proposing things like this. You do not fight for anything, but rather take the middle ground because you lack the courage to find value in a world where others hold power and not just people that look like you. To the POC that will sign on to something like this, the figurative white man will never see you as an equal, certainly not when you lay on the ground and let him kick you. I do not need to explain to you the dangers of this incrementalism. You will see it with your children and the violence that you refuse to shield them from. There will be the collateral damage of this incrementalism if you do not find the respect to fight for yourself, find the love to fight for them. Vote against this. You can prioritize your political image, but know you are trading it in for a legacy of complacency and white supremacy that you were too weak to fight. Your neighborhood associations will forget you, but history will bear the violence of your actions as markers on the ground where black indigenous people of color will lie way before their time. You might not have pushed the trigger that killed them. You have, however, loaded the gun. Thank you.
Our next registrant is Aditha Pugazendi of High Street, neither supporting nor opposing, wishing to speak, to be followed by Amelia Roykomar.
Uh, neither of those names are in the list.
All right. How about Tyson Vitale of Dell Drive in opposition wishing to speak?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I just heard my name. Is this item 64? I apologize.
Yes, it is.
Okay, sorry. Um, yes, I am speaking in opposition to this. Um, I'm trying to think of how to navigate this specific legislation. Um, I, I'll just say it like this. I, I'm speaking in opposition because I wish that the intent I believe some others have with this, from my understanding, would be better served if essentially the original men, the original put forth by Max.
It's 11 o'clock.
Was put forth, sorry, that's my MacBook, was put forth, um, with making exceptions explicitly, instead of explicitly laying out what they cannot have, but instead making explicit exceptions. exceptions of what they can. For example, first aid kits, tourniquets, et cetera, things that are not weapons or made to harm, shall you say. I would be inclined to support that if that was the case and the original fails. However, the substitute, I believe the intent of some of the alders who drafted it would be better served going about it in the opposite way of excluding, or sorry, explicitly allowing certain items instead of explicitly excluding them. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a number of registrants who are here not wishing to speak, or who, excuse me, have registered not wishing to speak. There are questions for any of our registrants on this item. All right, seeing none, then President Carter, a motion?
Yes, a motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Are there questions for staff? Alder Bedar?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to clarify, so the motion is for the original or for the alternate? Just clarifying.
What's on the agenda is the alternate?
Yeah. Okay, so the motion is the alternate?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for staff? Seeing none, is there any discussion? Seeing none, the motion is to approve the alternate. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Alder Campbell?
Yes, roll call, please.
All right. So a roll call has been requested. The motion is to adopt the alternate. All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no. As your name is called, I will unmute you all and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Alder Prestajakamo?
No.
Alder Prestajakamo, no. Alder Rumble?
No.
Alder Rumble, no. Alder Skidmore?
Yes.
Alder Skidmore, aye. Alder Tierney?
Aye.
Alder Tierney, aye. Alder Revere?
No.
Alder Revere, no. Alder Abbas?
Aye.
Alder Abbas, aye. Alder Abros?
Yes.
Abros, aye. Alder Bolday?
Aye.
Alder Bolday, aye. Alder Bedar?
Aye.
Alder Bedar, aye. Alder Carter?
Aye.
Alder Carter, aye. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Alder Evers, aye. Alder Foster?
No.
Alder Foster, no. Alder Furman?
Aye.
Alder Furman, aye. Alder Harrington McKenney?
Aye.
Alder Harrington McKenney, aye. Alder Heck?
Aye.
Alder Heck, aye. Alder Hennick?
Aye.
Alder Hennick, aye. Alder Campbell?
No.
Alder Campbell, no. Alder Lemer?
Aye.
Alder Lemer, aye. Alder Martin?
No.
Alder Martin, no. 13 ayes, 6 nos.
With 13 ayes and 6 nos, that item passes. And I will mute you all again. And we will move on to Item Number 65, where again, we have registrants. So Item 65 is Legisstar 61255, which is a substitute prohibiting the use of tear gas as of February 2, 2021, and requesting a study of alternatives by the Madison Police Department. Our first registrant is Michael Malloy of South Carroll in opposition wishing to speak, to be followed by David S. Turkin.
This summer, protesting devolved into violence and arson. When outnumbered by large volatile crowds, tear gas is the safest response for the community and officers alike. One evening this summer, an attempted arson took place. Madison Fire had to request MPD escort them to the scene using tear gas. Madison Fire Chief Davis had this to say the following day. "There's moments like we saw Monday night where MPD needed that tool. We had a really pretty angry crowd, and we had a volatile situation, one potentially that could have exploded had it reached an ignition source, and we would have had a lot of loss of life potentially." UW Police Chief Roman has provided this insight into the idea of getting rid of tear gas. "I would not send my officers into a situation in which they did not have all the tools necessary and available for the best possible outcomes, nor would I call for assistance from officers whose limited options increase the potential for escalation. Clear protocols, policy, expectations, and training as to the application of these tools is key to their ethical, effective utilization. Their removal only increases the risk for injury and death. I also have concerns that if Madison Police loses the ability to use tear gas, it may open up an opportunity for state or federal law enforcement to step in under the belief that we're unable to handle it. I would like to see community and local control remain over incidents like these. Lastly, this amendment seems premature. It asks for both the removal of tear gas and research into the other options. It only seems reasonable to me that you would research other options before you remove this tool. We have all been told you don't quit a job till you have a new one, and it only is common sense that you don't stop bailing water from a boat until you have plugged the hole." Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is David, I believe it's David S. Turkin of West Johnson Street in support, wishing to speak, to be followed by Larissa Joanna.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this important issue tonight. I'm a physician in Madison, and I support Agenda Item Number 65, Resolution 61265. To be precise, I support banning the use of tear gas against protesters by the Madison Police Department. I have spoken previously on this issue at a CCEC meeting, and I sent a couple of emails, including one a few days ago. Please refer to that email for my full rationale for supporting a ban on tear gas, but I will briefly summarize my points here tonight. I've already spoken on the evidence of the short and long-term health effects of tear gas, as well as its relevance to the COVID-19 pandemic. So for the sake of time, I won't reiterate those points, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. But as Chief Wall said at a recent Public Safety Review Committee meeting, quote, "Nobody is saying that tear gas is good for you. The question is, what are the alternatives, and are those better or worse for you?" End quote. I can appreciate that reasoning. But one thing that sets tear gas apart from other alternatives is that even when used in accordance with standard operating procedures, it doesn't just cause harm to the individuals committing a crime. It inevitably also harms bystanders, whether they are peaceful protesters, members of the press, medical personnel, or simply individuals in their own homes nearby, as has now been reported multiple times in Madison. Even if a few protesters are engaging in vandalism, tear gassing the peaceful protesters near them would seem to be a violation of those protesters' First Amendment rights. Furthermore, if one of my patients with severe COPD, asthma, or other lung diseases were one of those bystanders exposed to tear gas, I can pretty much guarantee that such an exposure would land them in the hospital or worse. The prevailing argument by MPD in support of tear gas, though, appears to be that without it, officers' only recourse would be to turn the deadly force more often. Perhaps if all less-lethal options were banned, officers would indeed turn the deadly force more often, whether they actually had to or not. But I don't think that this concern applies if we're just talking about banning tear gas alone and if officers still had other less-lethal options available. Nonetheless, I certainly wouldn't want an unintended consequence of a tear gas ban to be that even more serious harm comes to Madison's residents. Neither would the authors of this resolution, however, which is why the ban is not immediate and specifically sets aside time to conduct a study of alternatives. To be clear, though, numerous groups across the country have already studied alternative crowd control methods for decades and have concluded that the tactics such as tear gas only serve to escalate violence rather than to quell it. Therefore, there is already enough evidence to say that tear gas should be banned, and I disagree with the alders who have said that MPD's study of alternatives should be completed prior to deciding to ban tear gas. The benefit of having MPD conduct such a study would be to familiarize them with the alternatives that already exist, not to reinvent the wheel. So, to conclude, the available scientific evidence shows that tear gas causes bodily harm not only to its intended targets, but also to bystanders, and that its effectiveness as a crowd control agent is questionable at best. In evidence-based medicine, we would not use a treatment if it has questionable benefits and definite harms. I hope that you all will make your decision tonight based on science as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Larissa Joanna of Blair Street in opposition wishing to speak, to be followed by Ariselle Esparza.
Here, neither of those names are in the list.
All right. Then we have Mary Malloy of Mineral Point Road in opposition available to answer questions. And, I'm sorry, we have a decent list of other registrants as well that I'll invite you to look at and ask if there's any questions for any of our registrants. All right, seeing none. President Carter, a motion on Item 65.
A motion to adopt the substitute?
Vice President Abbas?
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt the substitute. Are there questions for staff? Alder Harrington McKenney?
Madam Mayor, I have a question to you. If there is an alternative, when should I, could I bring that forth?
Once we start discussion.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any questions for staff? Alder Hennick?
Yes, I have a question for Chief Wall on how bans in other cities throughout the United States that have implemented something like this have gone.
All right, Chief Wall?
Alder, so the only recent ban that I'm aware of was in Seattle, and the action there was a little bit broader than what took place here, but for what's at issue in this resolution. But I think it hasn't worked well there. They've seen, I think, an increase in unrest and violence and some really remarkable levels of violence and property damage, arsons, that sort of thing. In fact, shortly after the council there enacted that, their ban, the Seattle chief sent a letter to property owners, basically sort of putting them on notice that they were not going to be able to respond to large-scale unrest and problems. And the Seattle PD had been under a consent decree, and in fact, the Department of Justice sought to get an injunction against the ordinance taking effect because they thought it was going to cause the officers there to have to use more intrusive, higher levels of force. So interestingly, the DOJ was actually intervening there in opposition to the ban that was put forth. But I think the net result that they've seen has been pretty negative in terms of the impact on the capacity to respond to violence and unrest.
Thank you. And a follow-up question on that. What kind of an impact would this have on our ability to work with other departments in the area and throughout the state?
Well, I think certainly other departments would probably refuse to come and assist us if this was not an option for them to use or for us to use. I think it's a very standard piece of strategy and tactics for large crowd unrest used by multiple agencies across the country, and I think it would really have an adverse impact on our capacity to give outside-agency assistance, which has been critical for us over the last few months on a number of occasions.
Thank you. No questions at this time.
Thank you. Are there other questions for staff? Vice President Abbas? I'm sorry. There you go.
Is Mary Butari is here? Chief of Staff?
I do not believe she's on the call, no.
All right, Mayor, then I will ask you a question. So the Kahoot model, which we are looking for mental health, if, let's say this gets passed and MPD get into a situation where they need to use alternative de-escalation technique, and it's not available, can Kahoot model can cover those areas as an alternative?
Alder, that's not really a question that I can answer. The chief may be able to answer, and I think that if we had somebody from the fire department, they might be able to speak to it, but I don't think we have anybody from fire on the call. Chief Wall, do you want to, do you have an answer to the alder's question?
So if I'm understanding, if there was an issue with a barricaded subject or an incident where we currently might use tear gas, would the Kahoots' model staff be able to use it?
No, not to use it. I mean to say, as an alternative, if this got passed and you don't have a tear gas and you get into a situation where you have to use de-escalation alternative, would Kahoot model can take that responsibility to de-escalate and engage?
Well, I think, obviously, there's a lot of unanswered questions about what that model is going to look like, but for everything that I've seen from the Kahoots' model in Oregon and other similar things across the country is that if it was to that level of violence or problems where the use of CS gas or some other force should be contemplated by us, the Kahoots' people would not be the first responders. They would not be handling that. They would expect us to stabilize the scene, and then they would be able to sort of go in and maybe do the next steps. But we would have to be the ones there to make the scene safe and secure the situation.
Is there any state law? Let's say if somebody is inside the house and considered as a harmful person or violent, is there any state law which prevents sending a social worker inside, or this is like a general practice, like police have to be there as a first contact? So I just want to get, is there any law around it? Like, hey, if somebody's inside is a violent, police have to be one, not social worker. Once police engage, make sure the situation is not harmful, then social worker can get engaged or social worker can go inside. Is there any, it's best practices or any state law around it?
I think there's a little bit of both. I think in terms of state law, when you're talking about someone who's creating a risk of harm to themselves or a risk of harm to others, someone who we would take into protective custody for their own safety, then state law mandates that law enforcement be part of that, and actually, police have to be the ones that sort of make that determination, put someone in protective custody, and sort of do the immediate follow-up. And then certainly in terms of the best practice, certainly in our experience working with mental health professionals and other providers, is that when there's a risk, a significant safety risk for the involvement of weapons, that they're not going to go in, they're not going to get involved until police have stabilized the scene and typically taken someone into custody or otherwise made the scene safe for them to move in and do what they do.
And is there, I know in this resolution, they asked for a study, but is there any technology in your knowledge coming into open market about de-escalation beside this chemical agent, something more innovative, less harmful? Do you have any knowledge about that, or is there anything available at the moment?
Well, there's certainly always different things that entrepreneurs are trying to create and come up with and market and sell. And, you know, over the years, we look at a lot of different things that come in the markets, and we've been very conservative about what we've used and what we've chosen to deploy. And it's just because we want to be very confident in what we're going to use is going to, you know, not create an unnecessary risk of injury, it's going to be accurate, it's going to be effective. And so we've chosen to not deploy a lot of technology and pieces of equipment that other agencies do. But there isn't any other sort of, you know, Star Trek phaser or some great piece of technology, particularly to deal with, you know, large crowds, because that creates another challenge that really limits options that we have. So there's not a lot of great things out there. It's something we look at continually.
Thanks, Chief.
All right, thank you, Alder. Do we have any other questions for staff? Do we have any other questions for staff? Yes, President Carter.
Yes, Chief Wall, did you mention, or maybe someone already asked this question, but without having tear gas, how would, if we're in a situation or we needed other cities' police departments to come and assist us, would they come? And that includes EMTs, et cetera?
Well, I think it would certainly, you know, I don't, I don't know that a resolution could prohibit an outside agency necessarily from using tear gas in the city, but I do think that if we were prohibited, it would significantly hinder and hamper our ability to have outside agencies from assistance because they typically would not want to be the primary entity using that type of force. That would be our responsibility typically. So I think it would, it would really hurt us and create some risk.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney, questions for staff? Sorry. There you go, Alder.
I'm waiting for the appropriate time for the alternate.
Okay. Are there any other questions for staff? All right, seeing none, then discussion. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the alternate requesting the completion of a study of alternatives to use of tear gas by the Madison Police Department prior to the determination to prohibit the use of tear gas. If I can get a second, I'll speak to it.
All right, go ahead, Alder.
All right, thank you. In speaking to the alternate, I want to lift up accountability, documentation, and control. The selection of the oversight board in place, the independent auditor approved for hire, the chief of police is in the hiring process. And so non-lethal alternatives certainly is something that will be considered. And so I moved this forward is because accountability has been one of the things that has been brought up. The fact that it has also been brought up that the police have violated their SOPs that has been brought up. But what I put forth to you now is that there is a mechanism, a system, that is going to be in place to hold police accountable in how they administer alternatives of de-escalation. And so to have that study after the determination is, so the way that this is written is that the decision has already been made to terminate the use of tear gas even before the study is connected, even before the study is completed to alternatives that are possible to tear gas. And so the amendment speaks to, let's have the study, get the results of the study, and then make the determination of where we're going to move forward from here.
Thank you, Alder. Can you clarify, please? Are you introducing a full alternate resolution?
Yes, I am.
And does the clerk have that?
No, I can send it.
And do your colleagues have that language?
No.
Alder, if you could please send that language to the clerk and to your colleagues so that they know what they're discussing.
All right, I'll do that now.
And it would be helpful, well, I guess we'll wait for folks to receive that language. Alder Bedar?
All right, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to clarify with Alder Harrington McKinney. Is Alder Harrington McKinney doing a full new resolution or changing the be resolved clauses to what the resolved clause is that she just read? Or is it a full new resolution with all whereas clauses?
So I'm going to ask for assistance. So the change is, the way that the resolution is written is that the, that the use of the tear gas will be, let me look at my notes, the use of the tear gas will cease as of, and I don't have that before me, a specific date. And then the study will come after the designated determination of stopping use of the tear gas. And so what my resolution, what my alternate intent is to have the study, to have that information as the basis of making the determination of what we're going to do with de-escalation and specifically with tear gas.
Alder, can I, can I make a suggestion here? I believe that Alder Lemmer can help us out of this situation. So if you don't mind, Alder Bedar. Alder Lemmer?
Yes, okay. So I think if we remove the final, be it finally resolved, and replace it with, be it finally resolved upon receiving this study from the Madison Police Department, the Madison Common Council will review the findings with careful attention on available de-escalation alternatives and use this information to determine whether to ban tear gas, and if so, will determine an appropriate timeline. I think that would get at that.
I love it, yes.
All right, so what I'm hearing, Alder Harrington McKinney, is that your motion is for the language that Alder Lemmer just read?
That is absolutely, yes. Thank you, Alder.
And Alder Carter, as the second, do you concur?
Why not?
Okay. And then is there any objection from the body to that being the motion before us? Alder Balday, are you objecting or just wishing to speak?
No, I have a question. So with the thing is that Alder McKinney proposed and Alder Lemmer just read, will use of tear gas be banned at all?
So Alder Lemmer?
Read that again. Yeah, so not yet. We would have to review the findings of the study and make a determination from there. So it says, we'll read the study and then based on the findings of the study, we will make a recommendation. So the language that I propose is, we remove the be it finally resolved that's in there that says, you know, Madison Common Council prohibits the use and purchase of tear gas by the Madison Police Department. And we replace that with, be it finally resolved upon receiving this study from the Madison Police Department. The Madison Common Council will review the findings with careful attention on available de-escalation alternatives and use this information to determine whether to ban tear gas, and if so, will determine an appropriate timeline.
Alder, I'll ask the same thing of you, to send that language to your colleagues so they have it in front of them and also to the clerk?
Yep, the clerk just got it.
Excellent.
I have a question.
All right, excuse me, Alders. Please direct your comments to the chair and we'll try and deal with everything in order. We have a number of Alders in the queue now.
Well, I had the floor and I wasn't done.
Alder Balday, I am coming back to you.
Okay, so I mean, I just hope you are not addressing me as interrupting because I had the floor, so I thought I was still, I'd still had the floor.
Yes, Alder, you were interrupted and now you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to be very clear that no part of the resolution is going to ban the use of tear gas until we get the results of the studies. And Alder Lemmer, I think that is clear, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. All right, Alder Lemmer, did you wish to speak further to your language?
Sure, thank you. So I think the resolution as it is kind of is doing two different things. It asks for a number of, you know, items in the study, you know, all of which I think are really important that we need to have, but then it also gives a date for when we will be banning tear gas. And I think we need to know what the findings of the study are before we do the ban. I'm concerned that without, you know, knowing, you know, what those findings are, you know, we could potentially be making people less safe rather than what the intent of this resolution is. So that is why I've proposed this amendment.
Thank you, Alder. Alder, well, the queue has changed. President Carter, I believe that you were next.
Yes, I did have a question regarding the amendment. So did you take out the date of February 2nd? There was a date in there.
Alder Lemmer, do you want to read your language again? You're still muted, Alder.
Thank you. So I'm removing the be it finally resolved at the very end and replacing it with the be it finally resolved upon receiving the study. And I'm not including a date in that, no.
Thank you. Thank you, Alders. Alder Balday, discussion?
No, so I still have a clarification on the resolution itself. At the top of the resolution, it reads, the proposed resolution prohibits the use of tear gas as of February 2, 2021. So that is not part of the resolution Alder Lemmer read. So if that passes, then that bans the use of tear gas. So that also need to be changed. If the resolution is to reflect just having a study and then afterwards talk about banning tear gas or not banning.
Alder, I'm going to interpret your remarks as a question to Attorney Haas if we need to amend the title as well as the body of the resolution. Attorney Haas, are you still with us? There he is. Now, Attorney Haas.
I don't know if the city has a standard practice. I guess it would seem to me that the title should also be amended as well. But I don't know if that's been the city's standard practice or if it's just to change the title retroactively if it passes.
Thank you, Attorney Haas. Alder Balday, did you have, oh, excuse me, Alder, did you have further questions?
The answer the city attorney gave is not very clear. So this is not just the title, it's in the body of the resolution itself. So if you read the first sentence on the resolution, that is not a title, it's part of the resolution. So when this passes, does it ban use of tear gas?
I will look at the exact language, I apologize.
So it's item sixty-five in case you are looking for it?
Yep, got it. And the language.
So the language.
I see it in the title.
So under the fiscal notes, the first sentence, under the fiscal notes.
Right. Well, the fiscal note is that part of the resolution.
Where does the resolution begin then?
I would say with the, with the title. I mean, the fiscal note is, you know, the note for what is being proposed.
Okay, if that is the legal advice, then I'm okay with it as long as we are not banning the use before the study. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Vice President Abbas?
Thank you.
I believe that we may be back to discussion now.
Thanks. I will promise I won't ask questions. All right, I just, I'm just reading the language Alder Lemmer just sent. So I have a small suggestion with that language. So we just have, you know, we did the position of police auditor. I think so this resolution, original resolution have some really good points about the study, also de-escalation. I think so we should send all that request to police auditor. And the police auditor should work with MPD and create a report and then bring it to common counsel. Rather than upon receiving the study from Madison Police Department, we should have, upon receiving the study from police auditor, and that report should come to common counsel and we should review. So we should send this back to police auditor and oversight committee and they should conduct, work with MPD and look into all those studies and come back with suggestion and see MPD policy and procedure around it.
Alder, if you, if you wish to make that motion, you'll have to wait until Alder Lemmer's amendment is dealt with and then you're free to make an additional amendment to that effect?
What I was thinking is, yes, I can do that, but I was thinking if that is friendly amendment, if they, if Alder Lemmer and Alder McKinney want to do a friendly amendment, that's great, otherwise.
Alder, the amendment has to be friendly to the body and that would be amending, you'd have to amend the clause that says who does the study to begin with.
Okay.
So it would be more than just this clause. So if you want to work on the language that you'd like to amend and perhaps share it with your colleagues, we'll come back to you after we deal with Alder Lemmer's amendment.
All right.
Thank you. Alder Kemble, did you have your hand up?
I did, but if Alder Abbas is going to make a formal amendment, I can speak to it at that time.
Thank you, Alder. All right, so I have no other Alders in the queue. The question is Alder Lemmer's amendment, which you all should have in your email and which amends the final be it resolved clause. Alder Bedar?
Sorry, Madam Mayor, just a point of process qualification. We will vote now on the amendment and then we will go back to take a vote on the underlying motion, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Right, so we are, we are currently amending the substitute. If the vote passes, we will then come back to discussion and I expect at least one more amendment, possibly others. And then at the end of our amendment process, we will vote on the underlying motion as amended or not. All right, so again, the motion is to amend the substitute resolution with the language offered by Alder Lemmer. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of the amendment? Alder Kemble objects, a roll call vote, Alder? All right. So all those in favor of Alder Lemmer's amended language, I, those opposed, no. We'll unmute you all and ask the clerk to call the roll?
Certainly, Alder Prestigiacomo?
No.
Alder Prestigiacomo, no. Alder Rummel?
No.
Alder Rummel, no. Alder Skidmore?
Yes.
Alder Skidmore, yes. Alder Tierney?
Aye.
Alder Tierney, aye. Alder Vervier?
Aye.
Alder Vervier, aye. Alder Abbas?
No.
Alder Abbas, no. Alder Alboros?
Yes.
Alder Alboros, aye. Alder Balday?
Aye.
Alder Balday, aye. Alder Bedar?
No.
Alder Bidar, no. Alder Carter?
Aye.
Alder Carter, aye. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Alder Evers, aye. Alder Foster?
No.
Alder Foster, no. Alder Furman?
No.
Alder Furman, no. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Aye.
Alder Harrington McKinney, aye. Alder Heck?
No.
Alder Heck, no. Alder Hennick?
Aye.
Alder Hennick, aye. Alder Kemble? Sorry, Alder Kemble?
No.
No, thank you very much. Sorry about that. Alder Kemble, no. Alder Lema?
Aye.
Alder Lema, aye. Alder Martin?
Aye.
Martin, aye. Eleven ayes, eight nos.
With eleven ayes, the amendment passes. And I will mute you all again. And that brings us back to discussion of the substitute motion as amended. Alder Abbas? Alder Abbas?
Yes, and I almost wrote this, I'm gonna send to everyone right now. Just one second. Okay. And let me go see. All right. So I did want to do a substitute, however you say amendment. So be it further resolved that Madison Common Council asked the police auditor to work with MPD to conduct a comprehensive study on de-escalation alternatives to use of tear gas and be it finally resolved upon receiving this study from the police auditor, the Madison Common Council will review the finding and all the similar, or Lema use.
All right, that's a motion. Is there a second for Alder Abbas's language?
Second.
Oh, sorry, Alder Carter will second. All right, so moved and seconded, you should have the amended language of the two resolved clauses in your email. Is there any discussion? Alder Furman?
Thank you Mayor, can, can we just at least clarify, there, there is no police auditor position? I assume this is referring to the independent monitor?
Alder Abbas, you mean the, the office of the independent monitor?
Thank you very much Alder Furman, I appreciate that's pretty late, so thanks for the clarification, yes.
Thank you.
Right, so let's, is there any objection to the motion being that the Madison, to change the language, that the Madison Common Council asked the office of the independent monitor to work with MPD? And then again, in the be it finally resolved clause, upon receiving this study from the office of the independent monitor, the Madison Common Council, et cetera?
Yeah.
I don't see any objection to that being the language before us. Alder...
Three people are in the queue.
Alder Foster, do you object?
Yes.
So you want to return to Alder Abbas's original language? I'm just asking if we can change...
That's fine, yes.
Yeah, thank you. So just to be clear, folks, we can't change the motion without the consent of the body. So in order to change the motion to include the proper name of the office of the independent auditor, I need your consent to do that. And so I don't see any objection to doing that. All right, so now we're in discussion of Alder Abbas's amendment, starting with Alder Kemble.
Thank you. So we don't currently have an independent monitor. It's gonna be months before civilian oversight board is trained and is able to complete the, the selection of, the search and screen and selection of an independent monitor. And this is an issue that has, you know, been a concern in the community for, you know, since, since June this year. So I don't think we need to wait for that person to be in place and on top of everything else, give them this task to do. We are the policymakers, we're perfectly capable of understanding, reading reports, consulting with, you know, our own experts and our, our own people who can help us understand those reports. And I just think if we're gonna do something on this, we need to do it now.
Thank you Alder. Alder Balday?
So this is a question again for the city attorney about the amendment. The amendment says we will ask, you know, the office to work with the police department and do a study. So it is just, uh, it's just an ask. So how about if they say no, what can we do about that, assuming this passes?
Attorney Haas?
Well, I think that's correct literally, it's just that the council asked the auditor. I guess the second, the second clause would not really come into effect if the auditor declines the request.
So then this is conditional of them accepting the ask, right?
But I think if the council wanted to require the auditor to, to conduct the, the study, the language would need to be tweaked a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
I hesitate to disagree with my city attorney, but I think that the council passing a resolution telling staff to do something is an instruction to them.
Okay, we just say ask, I just wanted a clarification, but I'll take whatever. If you said, or the attorney say, as long as I understand what is out there, that's all what I'm asking.
Thank you Alder. Alder Foster?
Thank you, yeah, I don't support this change, I appreciate, I think, the intent behind it, Alder Abbas, but as Alder Kemble stated, this position's not filled and it won't likely be filled for a while. If it were, this might make sense. But I, I very much supported the original resolution here in the states there that this has been, in war, has been banned for almost a century by the Geneva Protocol. So I, I don't believe we need a study of this to take this action, but I certainly don't wanna wait to even do this study until we have the independent monitor in place. So I will not be supporting the amendment.
Thank you Alder. All right, I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to discuss this amendment.
I just have a quick question, when is the report due?
Attorney Haas, is there a timeframe in the resolution? Is there a due date for the report?
In this amendment or the...
In the underlying resolution.
I believe it's January 6th, isn't it?
Thank you Attorney Haas. Alder Carter, anything further?
No, that's it.
Thank you. Alder Harrington McKinney, on the amendment?
On the amendment, yes. The question was about the date, is Chief Walder?
Yes Alder.
I don't see, oh, so Chief, there was a question about the date. How long do you anticipate, you know, bringing this, the, everything together to complete the study? Because we had this discussion at the Public Safety Review Committee and kept it very narrow with tear gas and we didn't broaden it. Could you speak to a timeline?
Yeah, I think it, uh, when we had that discussion for this report, I think that, and when we go back to sort of this original version of this, I think about three months was sort of what I had in mind, uh, as a timeframe to get it done. So I think, I mean, you got the holidays and the other complexity of probably a transition in my position taking place between now and then, but I think it's probably workable for that January, uh, January date.
Alder, does that answer your question?
So, yes, so, so what I'm hearing is, is that you, your department would have the enough time to generate that study and if we used a January date, that would be enough time to bring that completed study back before this body? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I think that's enough time.
Okay, yes, so there is a time associated with it.
Thank you Alder Harrington McKinney. All right, I have no other Alders in the queue. So the question is Alder Abbas's amended language to include the office of the independent monitor? All of those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called. We'll unmute you all and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Thank you Madam Mayor. Alder Prestajakamo?
No.
Alder Prestajakamo, no. Alder Rummel? Alder Rummel, no. Alder Skidmore?
Yes.
Alder Skidmore, yes. Alder Tierney?
No.
Alder Tierney, no. Alder Verveer?
No.
Alder Verveer, no. Alder Abbas? I, Alder Abbas, aye. Alder Alboras?
No.
Alder Alboras, no. Alder Balday?
No.
Alder Balday, no. Alder Bidar?
No.
Alder Bidar, no. Alder Carter?
Yes.
Alder Carter, aye. Alder Evers?
No.
Alder Evers, no. Alder Foster? Alder Foster, no. Alder Furman?
No.
Alder Furman, no. Alder Harrington McKinney?
No.
Alder Harrington McKinney, no. Alder Heck?
No.
Alder Heck, no. Alder Hennick?
No.
Alder Hennick, no. Alder Kemble?
No.
Alder Kemble, no. Alder Lema?
No.
Alder Lema, no. Alder Martin?
No.
Alder Martin, no. Three ayes, 16 nos.
With three ayes and 16 nos, that amendment fails. And I will remute you all. And we are back to the substitute resolution as amended by Alder Lema. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you, I wanted to, the date was January 2021, that was, was that included in? There was no date included in Alder Lema's alternate, can we add that date?
Alder Harrington McKinney, it's in the underlying substitute resolution?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Seeing none, is there objection to record a unanimous vote in favor of the substitute as amended by Alder Lema? Alder Kemble objects, so we'll have a roll call. Alder Alboras, before we vote?
I wanna make sure that I'm, that this isn't too convoluted here. So obviously Alder Lema's amendment passed, which was that we would convene the study and the council would review that study and make a determination after that. So what are we voting on now? I'm just, wanna make sure I'm on the same page with everything.
So Alder, we're voting on the substitute resolution as amended with Alder Lema's language?
Gotcha, so we voted initially to approve the amendment, so now we're going back with the substitute with the amendment.
Right, to vote on the entire thing.
Thank you so much.
Yep, so again, the motion is the substitute resolution as amended by Alder Lema's language? All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, oh, Alder Badar?
Is this, can I still speak?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So obviously I was a sponsor of the original and the substitute. I did not support the amendment, but I will be voting for the underlying because I do think that it's important for us at least to have the study. But again, clearly I wanted us to go a step further, but I will be supporting this, which is what's before us.
Thank you Alder. All right. The motion is to approve the substitute resolution as amended with Alder Lema's language. I have no other Alders in the queue. All those in favor, aye. All those opposed, no, as your name is called. We'll unmute you all and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Thank you. Alder Prestajakamo?
No.
Alder Prestajakamo, no. Alder Rummel?
Aye.
Alder Rummel, aye. Alder Skidmore?
Aye.
Alder Skidmore, aye. Alder Tierney?
Aye.
Alder Tierney, aye. Alder Verveer?
Aye.
Alder Verveer, aye. Alder Abbas?
Aye.
Alder Abbas, aye. Alder Alboras?
Aye.
Alder Alboras, aye. Alder Balday?
Aye.
Alder Balday, aye. Alder Bidar?
Aye.
Alder Bidar, aye. Alder Carter?
Aye.
Alder Carter, aye. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Alder Evers, aye. Alder Foster? Alder Foster, aye. Alder Furman?
Aye.
Alder Furman, aye. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Aye.
Alder Harrington McKinney, aye. Alder Heck?
No.
Alder Heck, no. Alder Hennick?
Aye.
Alder Hennick, aye. Alder Kemble?
No.
Alder Kemble, no. Alder Lema?
Aye.
Alder Lema, aye. Alder Martin?
Aye.
Alder Martin, aye. 16 ayes, 3 nos.
With 16 ayes and 3 nos, that item passes. And I will remute you all. And that brings us to the end of our agenda tonight. And I just wanna take a little moment to acknowledge that I would normally turn to Alder Morland at this point in time. But alas, she has left us and gone on to, I hope, better things. And so President Carter, I will turn to you.
Motion to adjourn.
Moved and...
Seconded.
Seconded to adjourn, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adjournment? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you all, have a good night.
Good night, everyone.